Ready?
Last go ahead and get started. It's time for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Councilor Gerson.
Present.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor Trask.
Present.
Councilor Goble.
I'm here.
Councilor Gorley.
Here.
Councilor Coleman.
Present.
I'll let the record show I have seven present with no absence. Uh, before we get started this evening, um, I was saddened to hear, um, um, uh, tragic, a fire that happened early this morning, uh, a loss of a family. It's always saddening to hear that. Uh, my heart and prayers go out to that family for the loss and it's never a good time. So I'd like at this moment to have a moment of silence for that family. Thank you. Uh, consent agenda.
On the minutes on page 11, Julie, it talked about, uh, the grant for showcase. It should have been 500 instead of $5,000. On page 11. So with that correction, I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second, Deb.
A motion and a second with an amended agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, were we gonna do a roll call?
Go on, roll call.
Yeah.
That's correct. Um, go ahead and roll call, please.
Uh, Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Councilor Gerson.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yes.
Councilor Trask.
Yes.
Councilor Goble.
Yes.
Councilor Gorley.
Yes.
And Councilor Coleman.
Yes.
Record show of seven yeses with no nays. Recognition of visitors and hearing petitions. Um, we have County Commissioner Will Tucker who would like to speak this evening. So I will turn that over again.
Commissioner Tucker.
So I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you've seen of the governor's reopening plan, but on the 20th, at 1:30 is the plan that is the last plan I received from the governor's office. She's asking counties, uh, to prepare plans and have them in this week, uh, as she's working right now with hospitals and clinics on their possible openings. She's now, um, wanting to talk to the counties. I've talked to Ray a little bit. I've talked to, through him to, to the mayor. Uh, and I just want you to know that we are, um, taking this charge to do this carefully and slowly, very seriously. To that end, uh, we have purchased, uh, sent a purchase order out for 8,000 testing kits for half a million dollars. Um, so that we have the ability to do testing beyond the few I get from the county. I'm sorry, from the state. Um, and so I'm currently getting, uh, today I got, okay, Monday, uh, we got 250 tests from the state. And today I used a group of them and tomorrow I'll finish out using 180 of them, testing one, uh, manufacturing plant, a food processing plant, called, uh, um, National Frozen Foods, who has an infection and they supply 21 distribution centers for our friends at Walmart. So, um, it's important for us to test them and get them back going. Um, and, um, and, and so we're gonna prioritize that. The 8,000 we bought have not started shipping yet. So the company is Willa Valley Toxicology out of Corvallis, who got some equipment from OSU's vet school, uh, to allow them to do the testing of the type necessary. They've been certified to do the testing, but the trouble we have is nose swabs of a, of a crazy little thing, a little chunk of, uh, foamy material on the end of a stick that breaks off at a certain point. So it drops into the test tube and stays in the test tube. Uh, nose swabs are the gating factor. I mean, this is absolutely crazy. He's got the medium, he's got test tubes. He's all set to send us kits, but you can't get a thousand, and not just us, thousands and thousands, uh, to buy out his supply and capacity of testing kits. So we've been waiting three weeks now, uh, three weeks, two weeks, two and a half weeks ago, we placed the order. Uh, and we've been hoping to, to actually start going to Congress sites, to going to, uh, senior centers, to go to, uh, uh, recovery centers and start testing people in Congress sites because, as you probably know, the Veterans Home in Lebanon has been one half of our cases. So of my, when I was in the sixties, they were 32. Now I'm at 79 cases today. They're still at 32. Uh, and so the, what's happened with, uh, National Frozen Foods is a, is a problem that, um, is, is throwing my numbers really off, uh, about what's happening in Lynn County and not being able to be able to test is, is a problem. So we're creating a plan. What is the plan talking about? Today, we had, uh, Chamber of Albany and the Chamber of, of, of Lebanon. And we had a couple of folks from the public come in and talk to us about their desires to see Lynn County be open. And in that conversation, uh, they talked about the fact that, uh, they expect 20 to 30% of all small businesses to fail and falter and not make it and survive what's going on now. And the longer we take, the more that number goes towards 30 and possibly goes higher if we don't do something sooner than later. At the same time, the testing procedures from, and gating procedures from the, the governor talks about testing and she cannot supply the robust testing that she's asking for us to do. And so you can either wait as a county or do as we chose, which was to go and spend money you don't have, hoping you'll get 75% of it back from FEMA and you'll only be out 25% and it will have been the right decision for the community because you will have saved jobs and saved houses and saved all those things that roll on down as you get people back to work. The, the plans are not finalized. They're, they're pretty fluid. I sent Ray a, a draft today where I sat from listening to today's meetings and, and dumped that all into about four pages of written text. Uh, we're doing graphs that talk about our cumulative cases and where they've been. We're doing graphs that talk about, um, uh, the number of cases per day and how they, they come and go and, and, and peaks. And when I get a peak, it's because I've had testing. Um, and sometimes the peak, like last Thursday, Friday, uh, where people in Marion County, Benton County and Lynn County, we had citizens show up at all three health centers and by Monday of, of last week, uh, we, I'm sorry, Friday the week before and Thursday the week before, Monday and Tuesday of last week, we started doing tracing and found that we had people going to different hospitals and going to different county facilities. And we had 10 cases by Thursday that were identified out of this one employer. And so testing is absolutely critical. We have to get there. And so I'm not sure what the, the infectious disease doctor who works for us in Lynn County will tell me. In fact, he's one of my phone calls after I hang up to you with the president of the hospital, called me as I was on, waiting for you guys to, to be ready to start, uh, with one call from him and Dr. Muth is on for later on tonight as we talk about how to present what we don't know in a way that sounds like we are in control and we won't do anything until we know. So the governor wants us to have the ability to test. You would think that that would mean the president and the governor have sent us test kits. They, they are, but they aren't them to send. And so we've gone out and done this on our own. You would think that they would have fixed criteria and she's not. She's asking counties to suggest. And some counties have submitted their plans and I've seen Baker County, who has no one sick and no positive, and no, no deaths. And their plan is let us free. Um, but I have Benton County who has expressed concerns about Lynn County wanting to open. And if we actually had a surge in Lynn County, the fact that Corvallis is our trauma and most severe center and part of the same chain, if somehow Lebanon, which is not full, in fact, hasn't had but a couple COVID positive patients and does not have one at this moment, but besides, quote, Albany, which doesn't have two or three, I think it is, three now, I think about, is COVID positive cases, they're nowhere near capacity. In fact, they're running about one third to less than one half of their capacity. So they, but the concern from Benton County is, is that we go crazy in Lynn County and all of a sudden we don't have seven deaths. We have 70 deaths and we don't have, um, 70 people ill. We got 700 ill and we need to hospitalize hundreds and we exceed their capacity. So Benton County is concerned about that and we will try to address their concerns because it wouldn't do well for Lynn County to be putting a plan together that's not supported by a neighboring county. Um, but do know that we have a surge plan, that hospital has a surge plan and that their backup surge plan is Lynn County. We own 200 cops and 400 blankets, 200 pillows and chairs in a, in a fair expo building. And the plan is, is they would give us some management oversight and we'd use the Lynn County Medical Reserve Corps and we'd stand up a COVID positive, uh, waiting until you have symptoms area and a COVID positive can't go home, but don't need to be in a hospital area to take the pressure off of the, the hos- the hospital. But we don't expect to have to go there. Uh, we're expecting to gate things slowly and carefully. And so we're asking the governor to look at a plan. We don't have a plan already, but I'll get it up to Ray as soon as I do. Uh, if you haven't seen the governor's, um, twenty pages or so of criteria, it's interesting reading. Um, she said on Thursday of last week, she sent out more material on Monday. She said on Friday to commit the county to stop sending her letters that she'll send us a final draft on Monday because many counties were submitting plans and counties are continuing to submit plans. And she did not get anything out yesterday or today, but she's working very hard on the medical side, getting open some additional procedures, um, some things that would be considered, uh, not required testing, putting in ports, uh, knee replacement. And you're gonna see the hospitals and clinics start to open back up. And in fact, um, they're talking about some private practice doctors opening up also next Monday. But she's working on approving those plans and there, those people are working busily on creating those plans to get approved and respond to her input. So I'm right now, um, gonna take a few minutes of dead voices tonight, but I'm not getting a lot of their attention because they are, uh, busily to respond to the governor. So I wanted you to know that we are looking at it. Um, we are looking at a, there's a seven county consortium of county parks directors from Lynn to Lain, all the way down to the, to the California borders that want to ask the state to let county parks open and take places like Sunnyside and open up every other spot and open up the, the, the space that's not reserved, but used for county overflow, use that for reservations only and move people into every other spacing. But take parks like, uh, River Bend and allow it to open. Um, we have some businesses that are asking to, to get open. So it's, uh, veterinarians and some others saying that they've got things they need to do with animals, uh, that they'd like to get going on and they believe they understand how to manage and care. And we know that whatever the plan is that we produce, Lynn County's gotta do a better job of communicating the plan and living the plan. And that's what, I guess my last thought I'll leave you with is, um, the current request from the federal government, even though you saw the vice president not wearing a mask tonight, um, in a hospital with COVID patients. The current request from the health side of the federal government and from the state of Oregon is that when we're out in public, we should be wearing a mask. And I think you'll see, you'll, I think you'll see that in our plans, we're gonna ask businesses to have their employees wearing masks. I believe you're gonna see in our plan that you were gonna ask customers to wear masks. I went to Safeway on my way home tonight to pick up milk because it goes off sale tomorrow and, uh, and, uh, there was only like four people who weren't up a Safeway employee wearing masks. Everybody I knew, everybody I waved to and talked to weren't wearing masks. And in fact, our health director wanted everybody in the boardroom today to hold up their mask and, uh, a number of us couldn't. Uh, mine was actually on my desk, but we didn't have one. And most people who showed up, the sheriff and others, they believe they're bulletproof and, uh, and don't necessarily need a mask. So we're working on a plan. We don't have one, but we are gonna ask to be opening. And we are gonna be doing that in conjunction carefully with our medical providers. Um, and we are going to continue to work with Corvallis Clinic. In fact, we're, have a conversation tomorrow with them. So we are trying very hard to have a conversation that carefully moves us towards opening. Questions?
Any questions of councillors?
Uh, no, Will. Uh, personally, I want to thank you and all the county commissioners for all your efforts and hopefully we can get this county open sooner than later.
So Greg, thank you so much. I appreciate you being willing to respond to me earlier this week, or last week, I guess it was. And so thank you so much. But just know that you're not the only one. I probably receive one or two letters a day, usually one or two visitors a day. On board meeting days, we usually get a couple of folks in there as well. And it, um, it is people who are absolutely concerned about their businesses. Uh, if the trust manufacturer doesn't make every truck he can fill right now for orders, he's concerned because real estate offices aren't showing houses, buyers aren't financing themselves, banks' applications are way down, and he's concerned that he's gonna be laying his people off this fall. But right now he's competing with Salem Trust and other people and he wants to see his business to be able to stay open, be open and, and have the things around him support him. So know that we're trying to do it. I thank you so much. I'll leave you in peace. Good night.
Thanks, Will. Um, moving on, old business, request for council action, city council 2021 goals.
What seems like an eternity ago, uh, but was actually not that long ago. Uh, February 7th, the night we held our, uh, city council study session slash training, but definitely not a retreat. It's our, all we decided. Uh, and during that time, we, uh, talked about many things. One of the things was, uh, our goals, uh, your goals for the upcoming year. Uh, we did make some changes from goals from last year. I apologize, we didn't include a track changes in the packet, but we did include one here today with you. So you can see, uh, very distinctly the changes made between last year's goals and this year's goals. And then you have a clean copy, uh, in your packet. What we've done the last couple of years is left them available for people to comment on. We've held, uh, discussions as well on them. I think it might be appropriate if we, uh, if the mayor would entertain kind of going around the table and seeing if any councillor has any comments on this perhaps, especially given the timeframe. There's been so much that's gone on since February that, uh, it would probably be good for all of us to have a discussion on, um, kind of reinvigorate or re-energize our brains as to the discussions that surrounded them and, and the changes. So, uh, what we've done in the past is, again, is review them, talk about them. Uh, you can certainly adopt them at this point if you would like. Uh, I believe we have had them on a past agenda prior to the COVID issue. Uh, and we said we would bring them back. Uh, it's just, it's now been some time and, um, I'm getting back in the groove of things.
Okay.
I'll start with councillor Trask. Can you, anything you would like to bring up regarding it?
No, I'm good.
Councillor Gerson.
No, it's what we talked about.
I don't have anything, councillor Gorley.
Not really. Um, on the first one where it says, "We aspire" at the very bottom, "to create an economically strong environment in which businesses prosper." I think we could actually, after businesses put, and community members prosper. I, because we have, represent them as well and we want everybody to prosper. So that was the only thing I noticed.
Uh, so your reason why I can't add it?
It's not a big thing. It's just, you know.
Just take, or ask for a motion. You guys all want to change it. Certainly do that.
Good idea.
Let's, let's, before we do that, let's go ahead and continue.
I'm good with the rest of it.
Okay. Councillor Nash.
I'm good.
Councillor Goble.
I'm by with it the way it is.
Okay. There is a discussion, a small change in one, to entertain and a motion to make the little change under "We aspire." So I'll open it up if there is a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, uh, councillor Gorley, what, what was your change that you wanted, you wanted to add on there?
Um, after the word "businesses," include "and community members prosper."
Okay.
I, I don't have a problem with that. That's what we want to do.
Motion in a second.
I'm gonna move and make that change.
I'll second that.
The motion in a second. My roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Councilor Gerson.
Yes.
Councilor Nash.
Yeah.
Councilor Trask.
Hi.
Councilor Goble.
Yeah.
Councilor Gorley.
Yes.
Councilor Coleman.
Yes.
I'll let the record show I have seven yeses with no nays to approve of the amendment to the goals and approval of them. Okay. Uh, new business. We have a proclamation this evening on mental health.
Mr. Mayor, can I clarify? So the motion was to make a change. We don't have a motion to approve. Is that correct?
I thought it was wrong one.
Okay.
There was a motion to change them, but not a motion to adopt them.
Okay, we can go ahead and.
Do you want to follow up and do that? Or do you want to leave it open? Public can have a couple of weeks to look at them and get to any comment and adopt it at the next meeting? Or we can just adopt it now?
It's a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't know why we were gonna wait necessarily.
I think it's good.
I think we have a consensus, so, uh, I'm gonna need a motion in a second.
So moved?
Second.
Well, a second roll call, please. Approval of the goals.
Julie's earning her pay today. And last time.
Councillor Coleman.
Aye.
Councillor Gorley.
Aye.
Councillor Goble.
Yes.
Councillor Trask.
Hi.
Councillor Nash.
Yeah.
Councillor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes. I'll let the record show I have seven ayes with no nays to approval of the goals set forth. Um, move on now to the proclamation. Mental Health Month, May 2020. Whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives and whereas promotion, prevention are effective ways to reduce the burden of mental health conditions and whereas there is a strong body of research that support user-friendly tools that all Americans can access to better handle challenges and protect their health and well-being and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead a fully productive lives. And whereas each business, school, government agency, faith-based organization, healthcare provider, veterans groups and citizens has the responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts and whereas Lynn County, as well as the nation as a whole, is going to go, going through infectious disease outbreak. It is important to remember that feeling anxious, confused, overwhelmed and powerless is very common and quite normal. By limiting media consumption, staying connected and with loved ones and staying active, we can maintain our mental health as we try to protect our physical health and whereas the Lynn County Mental Health Advisory Board is emphasizing that there is no health without mental health by being involved with public service announcements, health fairs, public speakers and various training regarding mental health issues. Therefore, I, Greg Mahler, do here proclaim, May 2020 is Mental Health Month in the city of Sweet Home. As a mayor, I also call upon the citizens, government, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools in Sweet Home to recommend our community to increasing awareness and understanding that mental health steps our citizens can take to project, protect their mental health and need for appropriate and accessible services for all people of mental health conditions. Um, next request for council action, resolution nine for 2020, resolution setting fees.
Uh, so you saw most of these at our last meeting. We introduced them to you so you'd be familiar with them. Uh, in front of you in your packet beginning on page 23. Uh, anything that changed from last year and was in the packet two weeks ago is in red. Anything that has changed since last week is in green. Uh, there are very few of them in green, uh, but there are a couple of changes. You'll see the vast majority of the fees did not change. Um, actually very few of them did. Uh, and again, if they did change, our goal is simply to cover actual costs in all of our fees. Um, there are none of the fees which we set and which we're attempting to profit by any way, shape, means or form. Uh, and a reminder, some of the fees are not set by us. Uh, your building fees, uh, are actually set by the International Building Code and set at the state level. And then we adopt the International Building Code and we just adopt their fees. After that, we would, uh, uh, open it up for any questions any of you might have.
Questions of councillors?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Councillor Goble.
Um, I have a question about the conditional use for public hearing, $615. That seems like an awful lot. It seems like we should find a way to maybe whittle that down so it's not costing the person that much money for hearing. Uh, break down what goes into that?
Yeah, I would turn it over to Blair at this point. Uh, and I think Blair can answer that question for you of how we came up with that fee.
Yeah, so in our current code, any conditional use has to go to a public hearing before the planning commission. And anytime we have a meeting like that, we need to print notice in a newspaper and we need to mail notice to all of the property owners within 300 feet of the affected property. Sometimes depending on the density of the, uh, of the area, that can result in quite a bit of mailing. And then the, the notice in the paper alone, uh, depending on how long it needs to be, can range from, uh, just over a hundred dollars to, uh, almost $400. So add to that staff time, the amount of time it takes for staff to prepare for planning commission meetings and get all the materials out to the planning commissioners so that they can make a decision, the staff reports for that, um, for that request. It all adds up and that's why we have the, uh, the fee set at the rate that it does. This fee actually is not changing this, this year. It's been set at that level for a while. Um, the code, I will add that the code update that we're working on, um, we hope to have at least some of these conditional uses, uh, possible to be done administratively where staff could do them under certain criteria. And that should decrease the cost for those particular, uh, conditional use requests.
All right.
Did that answer your question, Goble?
Any other feedback councillor on that, Goble, on that? Was that satisfactory?
That's satisfactory.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a clarifying question, just for understanding. Let's say that the Lebanon City Council decides our chambers are beautiful and they'd like to rent them. Would they be charged the $10 an hour fee? Well, not for this room. Um, plus the $50 non-refundable fee, plus a refundable deposit for that group? That's my question there.
So that would, it would depend on the time.
Okay.
So the, um, uh, the non-refundable $50 fee is if they're using after hours.
Hmm.
For group one to use it after hours. Uh, we do that because, um, if we have staff here, uh, potential for some overtime costs and we need to cover those costs. The deposit, the $100 deposit would be refundable and that's in case there's any damages. Um, assuming that the Lebanon City Council would be, uh, not so rowdy when they use it, they would probably kick that back. Uh, but then, and then they wouldn't be responsible for, uh, the $10 an hour fee or depending on which room they use, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to understand the, how that was right reading. Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors?
I have a question.
Councillor Gerson.
Um, page 2025 talks about an open storage permit. Would somebody please explain to me what open storage is?
Yeah, Blair.
We have a similar discussion. This is a code enforcement item. Open storage means the open, it means storage of items in out in the open, not within a building or or concealed from view. And so typically, open storage is not permitted. However, under certain circumstances, like a commercial business having goods out in front of their store for sale that are not there temporarily, that are too large to be within a store, those kinds of things would be open storage. And so there is a permit that is available for circumstances where that's appropriate, and there's a number of of rules for whether that permit can be given. You you can't get an open storage permit just because you have a bunch of junk in your front yard. There has to be there. It's very controlled. But it is specifically set in the ordinance that there is a permit and that the amount of the cost of the permit is $0. It specifically says that in the ordinance. I don't know the history of that, but that's why we have it set in this resolution at no no cost. If that, of course, is to be changed, it would require the ordinance to be amended.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors?
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to find it again. When a user asks for a replacement of a meter, it went up $75. Aren't we trying to get those meters in so that they will be more accurate? So my question would be, why would we raise that by $75? I can't remember what page it was on, but I was just there a minute. Oh, here it is. No, that's not it. I just, I wonder why that went from from $125 to 200. Reinstallation of water meters at the request of the user. It's on page 21 of 24. I'm just asking. Greg?
Absolutely, I can take that. It is the actual cost of the replacement meter. So that is just reflecting of the actual cost of the meter. It used to be 100 and it used to be last time 120 some bucks. Now the meter is about 180 plus.
Okay.
Yeah, I figured that.
Okay. Any other questions, councillors? Okay, need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 9 for 2020.
I'll second.
A motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilor Nash?
Yeah.
Councilor Trask?
Aye.
Councilor Goble?
Yes.
Councilor Gorley?
Yes.
Councilor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes.
Councilor Gerson?
Yes.
At the record show, we have seven yeses with no nays to approval of the setting of fees, Resolution Number 9 for 2020. Request for council action, ordinance number 6 for 2020, local improvement district amendments.
Mr. Mayor, that begins on page 73, talking about a local improvement district. Robert and I will disagree as to whether it should be referred to as an LID or a LID. But I will let Robert take the lead on this one.
Basically, what brought this up is that we are, Joe and I have been working on a possible LID coming through, and so we looked at the our ordinance that we have in place and and first noticed that we have a senior section that I'll get to, but that's what you look in there and you see old numbers, and you think, well, maybe we better look at this and see if they're current, what we want to do. And then when I looked at it, I found some other things in reading through that I thought needed to be changed or at least looked at. And so I would direct you to page 76 of your packet. That is the tract edition, and it's just a lot easier, as my RCA said, it's a lot easier to read the tract edition and find out what what's going on than try to work through the the other. And basically, just to run down through, in the first one, just run down through the changes a little bit, the title to the first section there mentioned the C engineer, although they may have a large part in in doing what, it didn't mention anything in the in the actual ordinance, so so we just took that out of there. Basically, on this section, I'll just refer to the, it's all in chapter 3.16, so I'll just refer to the last three digits, 010 on there on page 76. There's a couple of changes in that one. Basically, we took out a survey because we really don't do a survey. Talked to Joe, we really don't do a survey. He does a he does a map and a plan and everything, and you've got to have the descriptions, the legal descriptions, and or a different way of identifying the properties, some mechanism, but it doesn't have to be, you don't have to survey it to to get that. And so we just took that out of there. The other one out of here is is basically dealing with mentions that we would give notice to lead holder, and I looked at that and then thought, we don't need to put that in there. We're already giving notice to the owner, person who has an interest, as they were buying it on a contract or whatever, that would be a person of interest, I would think. We'd give notice to them, having that little title in in the property, but we don't need to expand that to lead holders, because actually, to make sure that you covered everyone, you'd basically, I think, at least have to give a a title report or a reduced version of a title report to see who had leads on there, like your local bank and that sort of thing. Anyway, and I've looked at other ones, other cities and and the state one, because in the state statutes, basically, I didn't see it referred to. I just saw them giving notice to owners. And so that's where that comes from. And then over. The next one would be other on your page 79. We mentioned that it just referred to in there that if this is appealed, then the judge make a decision and and or the jury, and sometimes they may pick a judge rather than a jury, so we just have both of them in there, whichever they whichever they pick. The the next big one is over in this, that brought it all about, was basically over in senior citizens. I guess I'll just backtrack just a little bit. The ORS is, there was a couple of sections in here that I referred to, as we just updated, the ORS is changed, and so we just updated the ORS, during revised statute. But now we're over to the page 81, to the senior citizens, and that's where we where we basically, as I referred to before, started our inquiries. And what I can find out is, I believe this to be basically a unique, I don't know how unique, but I checked out a number of other cities, and they they didn't at least have it in their LID ordinances provision like this. But we have it in ours, and so I went to the finance director, and he came up with the numbers there in the middle of the page 81, the new numbers of 18,210 for an individual, and then 24,462 for a couple, and then a figure for the dependent. Basically, what the senior citizens' deferral is, is it works a lot like your deferral for if somebody comes in and does a rehab loan or whatever. When you when you pass away, or when you move, or some other mechanism takes you out of your residence, then then the bill becomes due. So that's basically what it's about, and and the changes there reflect that. And then the other changes there are basically just, we found some wording in there that referred to specifically sewer, and we just didn't think that that we needed that, so it made several other changes in the ordinance, just to take those wordings out, because they referred to as charges, and we didn't need those words anymore. If we're going to take out that and just refer to basically the general, if you've got a an improvement, that's what it deals with, not just specifically this this one at the time. And so those are the those are the main ones. If there's any questions, I can certainly take them now, but those were the main ones that are explained in my RCA and then tonight. But that's that's what brought it all about, is we think we might be having an LID come through. Okay.
Just talk about, see how it goes.
Any questions, councillors?
I have.
Councilor Gerson?
Banya, I think you probably have to answer this, a couple of these. On page 77, where it talks about assumption of portion of cost by city?
77?
Yeah, on page 77.
Okay.
So how would that be addressed in the budget? It says that the council could, on for various reasons, could assume some of the cost of of work, but how would we address that in the budget? Would it come out of general fund or what, if if a council decided to do something like that?
It kind of, it depends on the project, I would say. So if it's if we were improving a street, then then the council could decide that it's kind of going to come out of Fund 570, which has, it's that, it's the fund where the money from Lynn County came in at one point and is just kind of sat there earning interest. If it was a waste, if it was a sewer project, then the council could decide to take it out of one of the sewer funds. I'd say it kind of varies on what type of project it is and what financial resources are available.
Okay.
If I can interrupt, I think that would be part of the discussion.
Right.
Okay.
So as the as this came forward to you, it would be, should we contribute? And then the follow-up would be, how would you like to pay for that contribution?
I have a second question. So on page 81, page 81, we're talking about the senior discount. How did you arrive arrive at the comparables?
Those, so those numbers were a lot lower than they are listed right now. We did some research on kind of what the average social security distribution is for a senior at age of six, who retires at the age of 65. I tried to backwards calculate what the old one was, and it it came out to, I want to say it was two thirds of the average social security income is then what we used as our kind of low, low income status for exemption. And so that's the same methodology then that I tried to apply here, is two thirds of the the average social security income for an individual and half for the joint gross annual income number.
Okay, thank you.
And that that information came from the Social Security Administration's website.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, that's actually one of the discussions we'd like to have with you about this ordinance as we move it forward. So if you look, the last time that this section of the ordinance was changed appears to be 1991. So it's been a while. I was, it was either late in my junior year of high school or early in my senior year in high school. This would be one of the reasons why we may want to consider actually putting the formula in, in that percentage versus an actual number, because right now, when people look at this, it's like, wow, that's a huge jump. And it is, but the reality is, it's it's an equitable number compared to what figures were back in 1991.
And cost of living.
Yeah, with cost of living adjustments. So I would suggest that the council consider, instead of using the hard numbers, which we put those in there because that's what was in there before, but it might be better policy to put in the formula or the percentage of what it is. This way, it will maintain constantly throughout and help to avoid any of that confusion in the future.
It's always going to go up.
Well, unfortunately, yes.
So, Mr. Mayor, my question is, is it just for people that are on social security?
It doesn't, it doesn't list that. It just says that if their gross annual income does not exceed X dollars, so that could be any source of income for them, whether it's social security or not.
Okay. So so for somebody like me, which I probably won't be using this, but I get a pension, and but I think at that pension level, I would be very close to the lower minimum, and I'm not knocking this, by the way, for total income for a year, my income would be in the in that lower level of the the our normal money that would the people get. And I'm I'm not saying that I would be, you know, but but it would seem like that maybe we could take some of that into consideration for some of that. I don't know, because I can't remember what our lowest is income or our average income is, but it's not a lot of money. So I don't know. I don't know. This is, maybe we could think about that, and I'm not pushing that or anything.
We're open to whatever ideas you might have.
Yeah.
To be quite honest, we, Robert and I had no idea where that number came from, and so it was a number, which means we called Brandon, and Brandon said, well, let me do some digging, and that's what he came up with. It's the closest thing that we could find.
Yeah.
So.
Do we have figures on how often this occurs?
I want to say.
You mean an LID?
How often do seniors take advantage of this or disadvantage or whatever?
The the LID is rare, and I would imagine that anytime a senior took advantage of this would be equally as rare, if not more rare.
It's been a long time since we've done LID.
Yeah, I don't think we've done it in a while.
If you do, where you have LIDs, though, your percentage probably is up more than you would think, because where you're putting them usually is places where they don't have these facilities, and there's a reason for that, is there's not a lot of income there.
Additionally, I think I'd add to that with your, the income limits where they were before, it was it was a senior citizen with a gross income that doesn't exceed 6,620, and a married couple with their joint gross annual income not exceeding 8,800. If if you've done an LID since probably the year 2000, that income threshold was was extremely low in that timeframe, and so you probably didn't have many seniors that that had the ability to take advantage of this scenario.
Well, Mr. Mayor, from my standpoint, when I retired, my social security money was a lot less than the people that go till they're 70 or 66 or whatever their their line is. Mine is significantly different than that, than somebody that goes ahead and works. So they're 66 when my my high pay would have been, and that's my choice, of course, but so some of them can be $2,200 a month, you know, and so I don't know if that number is where we want to be. I don't know. I'm just saying. I don't know.
Again, I agree with Ray. We need to probably put that to a formula.
Yeah.
Move forward, because this is going to change.
And that could be kind of a crapshoot, too. We really don't know, you know, and we may have to adjust that later, so.
And we can adjust the formula. If two thirds isn't something that you're open to, or you'd rather change, we, like I said, we're we'll do whatever. We just know we needed to update it because we anticipate we're going to have one coming at us, and we wanted to make sure that what we had in place was a little more modernized. And again, repeat what Robert said, I don't think we could, did we find anybody else that even has this?
I didn't. I checked, at least not in their, which I would assume they would be in their LIDs. I didn't find any in the nine that I checked. Two of them, two of them use state law. I mean, there's a, there's a state, there's state statutes on doing an LID right out of the ORS.
Do you know if the state statute has it?
I didn't see it in there.
So you're kind of in, I don't want to say uncharted waters, but you're kind of in uncharted waters, for lack of a better term. Is there anything to base this on other than what we have from the past? I think what that means is you, if you made a I think what that means is you, if you made a suggestion, then we would go back and play with numbers and do some research and bring you back answers and go from there. But again, you have you have two more shots at this. So we would ask that you go ahead and pass it with the for first reading, and we could come back and make changes or not make changes based on your input for the second and third reading as well.
So, Mr. Mayor, I want to make it clear, did you say that the the number of these have gone up or we don't have any idea how many seniors have asked for this?
I have no, I don't know how many asked for it the last time.
Yeah.
But like everybody said, these LIDs, at least in the past, have only come up what every twenty years? Once every twenty years?
The last one I'm aware of involved was in the nineties.
Or guess somewhere right around nineteen ninety-one.
Yeah.
That was in the mid-nineties, I remember one.
Wow, that's a long time.
Any other questions of the councilors? Okay, council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, a motion to move this to first reading, please.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion second by roll call, please.
Counselor Trust?
Aye.
Counselor Goble?
Yes.
Aye.
Counselor Coleman?
Aye.
Mayor Mahler?
Aye.
Counselor Garrison?
No.
Counselor Nash?
Yeah.
On the record show, we have six ayes and one nay moving it forward for first reading, ordinance bill number number six for twenty-twenty.
It's just for first reading next time, then. Nice job. What happened to the British voice? It's been a long time since you've been here, so I'm just.
We haven't had an Irish voice.
Australian bro.
There you go, or the UK or something, so we can understand any of it.
You get to pick.
You're good. Serious options.
Do you want to start out with whatever? Want to start out with?
And they say, oh, shoot.
Request for council action, ordinance number seven for twenty-twenty, water system in critical affected chemical area.
So this is a unique instance. As council, or you may or may not be aware, but we have an area in the midway section which had a chemical spill and is a cleanup site. And as a result, the state required that people who were on wells in that area come off their well and be connected to city services. That was some some time ago, nineteen ninety-eight. Since that time, DEQ has continued to monitor those wells for cleanup efforts. And in their latest measurements, I believe every well has come up at a safe drinking water level.
The ones they tested?
The ones they've tested, correct. So as a result, we've had requests from members of the community to be able to reconnect to that well and come off of the city services. We had some concerns with that. We've met with DEQ on a couple of occasions, and we've actually been working on this for quite some time. It actually started when Jerry Sordi was still here. And one of our concerns was we are not in the cleanup hazardous chemical measurement business. However, DEQ has said they're not opposed to allowing people whose wells are properly tested to go back to those wells. So Robert has worked with DEQs and has come up with a form which is in here in which they would have to check off on it. It would be the responsibility of the well owner to have it tested, meet the criteria set by DEQ. DEQ would sign off, they would see the the report from the testing agency, it would then ship that back to us with a recommendation to allow or not allow, and then we would allow them at that point to disconnect. So if Robert has anything else to to add?
That's that's the way it works. We've got a letter in there from DEQ supporting it, and they've looked at the, well, they've looked at the RCA, the ordinance, which they drafted, basically, they drafted the section to change originally, and then they've seen the the form. The form could change over time depending on how we all figure it out and how it works out, but that's that's fine. And then so they've been in part communication with the top.
So this comes to you as a request from from the community? It's not something that we as staff pursue or or really weigh in on one side or the other? Either way, so this is would be up to the council on how they want to deal with this.
Questions of council?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Counselor Goble?
Will there be any fees associated with if somebody chooses to go back on their well with removing the water meter and things like that?
I would guess we would. It would probably be it would go right into the fee section that you just approved, and it would be based on what our actual costs are to cap that line and and remove the meter.
Okay, thank you. I, for me personally, this is a, I I don't, I'm not for this. That's just my opinion, though.
Mr. Mayor, I I think I I talked to someone, and I don't remember who it was, but I think that is there an Oregon statute that says that if you, this is different a little bit, and I just kind of wondered why they're doing that. But so if you have access to the sewer line that we provide and you have a septic tank, you're required by the Oregon statute to hook up to the to the sewer line? Do you know if that's true?
Well, our own ordinance, I believe our own ordinance is if you're within so so far of the sewer, you hook up.
Yeah.
But but the water is different.
Yes, yeah.
I believe the sewer, though, is only if there's a failure, and you're not allowed to put in a new septic. So if you're currently, I believe, I could be mistaken here.
Yeah, I, my memory, well, I thought it was you're within such and such a distance.
I think that's the county, then? I think that's the county.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I I think we've talked about this whole thing about people putting in wells, and I don't think, if I remember right, we were not opposed to that. As I don't know if that was necessarily a consensus, but I.
We can put wells in, but this is a case where they had wells, went to city, now come back to wells, and you got a bunch of used equipment and expense, hopefully you recover.
Well, I guess if if they want to spend the money and get new well pipes and pumps and guess, I don't know, I don't know how we could stop that.
Well, and I think it's different if you're the the owner and the resident, but I think if you're a renter and you're on a well in the city and they take you off of city water and you don't, you start renting and you don't know, I think we should periodically have that tested to make sure that it continues to be clean and doesn't develop something. And I and I I don't know how we do that or if that's really a concern that we should worry about, but.
I apologize, sorry for interrupting you. I have all kinds of like red flags.
Yeah.
I I believe the county is responsible for well. I could be wrong.
In this case, it may not be in the county.
I I don't I also don't have an answer for you. It would be new territory for us to get into that business. I'm not saying we couldn't. I'm just.
Yeah, I just know that I have a friend that lives in town, and when they sold their house, they had to drop a light down their well and all of this stuff. And as a renter, I would want to know that that was occurring or something because I would pull in and I would assume that that water was good because it's good, but there's no testing going on now. And, you know, it kind of worries me, but.
Me, too.
I believe landlord tenant laws are required.
You have to have, you have to supply water, and it's got to be happening. So the so the rule's there, but your issue's still there, but.
Right, who's doing it?
The rule is in place. I mean, they're supposed to be doing that.
I could tell you a general test is very inexpensive. We have our well-tested property that we own, didn't get the results we wanted, but it wasn't horribly expensive to have the test done. I want to say it was fifty-ish, fifty-ish to maximum a hundred dollars to have it tested.
But I think if you own the property and you have a well, you should be able to use it. It's reasonable. I agree.
Yeah, I I don't know that I'm opposed to that, but then also, I think if you're buying a house and you have to drill a well, you have to have so much water. So if that comes into play, too, and they can only get a half gallon an hour or a minute or whatever it is, then I guess they would take that into consideration, so.
I don't have a problem with people doing their own wells, but I do have some concern about going from well to city and then back to oil.
Well, you have to have, I think Greg's out there, there is a whole, for that issue, there's a whole ordinance on backflips, what you have to do and what you, what.
Yeah.
Cities real, as far as I know, their cities are real picky about wells and backflips. They don't want any contamination coming into their system.
Well, that's one of my concerns, backflow.
It's something council needs to consider if there's a max, it's a fairly large area. If there's a mass exodus off of our water system, that's a loss of revenue. And the costs for production, of course, would would be influenced by that. However, the costs for capital and particularly anything which is a debt service, that's that number now is spread out over fewer people, and more people are going to have to, people are going to have to pay more to cover the same debt service. I'm not saying there's going to be a mass exodus, there's only been one person who's come to us with this, but it's just something I would want the council to be aware of.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question about this. This is for an existing well. Because as I look at that map, those properties are pretty close together, so they aren't going to be digging any new wells on this, right?
Right. These are, these are, at least the idea is, these are, these are the wells that were there before the state came in and said, hook up. These people would go through this process to get unhinged to back to that well.
It's expensive to dig a well.
Yes, it is.
A lot more than just keeping with city water.
Well, and there's no guarantee like there used to be.
Right. Showing that from experience.
Yeah.
So I do, I I'm concerned about the the testing also. I mean, there is no guarantee that they will actually test their well. I mean, I I think the county, in the county property, in our other property, which we had a well with county, they were, we were required to do that, but if we as a city don't have anything that requires testing.
So we do that. This ordinance will require that they meet DEQ testing.
How often?
Well, initially to switch over. After that, it would be up to the well owner.
Yeah.
To test.
That's exactly what I mean.
Yeah.
But I think anywhere. That's true of the county, I think that's true anywhere else where there is a well.
Correct. Your your well, it's it's your property and you're choosing to use it, and you choose to get a test? I mean, that's the, that's the way it's done in the state and county.
I kind of agree with Counselor Garrison is that, okay, so they they do it the first time and then it goes haywire and they have arsenic in there again, how long are they going to know?
This is not arsenic. This isn't an arsenic deal. This is a spill, this is a man-made spill.
I understand that, but the reason that they were required to move to the city is because of the arsenic level.
No, no, this has nothing to do with arsenic.
Different.
Nineteen ninety-eight specifically because it's a man-made spill, not the arsenic natural, but a man-made spill. And.
Okay, okay, I got it. Okay.
You're thinking of the fossil.
Right. This is strictly, this is strictly with a strictly a logging spill. They came in, they took out the contaminants, and basically in this area, from what I can tell, and ever since then, just like you would logically think, it's gone down.
Okay.
But currently, if you go to sell a piece of prop or you go to buy a piece of property, you need to have the well okay before you can get your loan and stuff, so it protects the people that pass it on. They would have to pay to rehook or fix their well, so it's one half, one of the other, so.
And DEQ will continue to monitor the testing wells in the area. And if they, for whatever reason, you see another spike in DEQ, we do the same thing, require them to hook back up, so.
I have a hard time believing DEQ would continue to allow anything that wouldn't be permissible under the laws, so. When DEQ monitors something, they monitor it.
And those who have existing wells, those wells didn't go away, you know, they're there. So it's just a matter of rehooking up, so whatever expense is there, for some, it'll be prohibitive, some some will want to continue the city, even though there's a greater expense there, they know what they're getting, so I don't know.
Something to be said for security.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Goble?
I kind of look at it as one of our things is to provide the community with safe and viable drinking water, and means these wells were contaminated and we have no real way to police that in any way. And they're going to test it two times a year in, you know, wet and dry season. They get the tests sent off, two months down the road, the test comes back and it says that it is bad again, then we're, you know, say this is like a a place where multiple people will drink the actual well water, and then we could have potential twenty, thirty or more people sick from whatever contaminants that are in the well water. I have no problem with people being able to use the well for irrigation, washing cars, things like that, but me, there's a fine line right there when you're coming from a contaminated well.
Agree with you, Counselor Goble. Any other questions, council? Okay, council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I I think I think I'd like to have a little more information on whether they're going to be testing more or when they're going to test it, and I mean, if only one person.
Here's what I know, just for you, we can get more, whatever. Here's what I know in talking, at least, and and I don't put it in stone because the person's not here, but I'd ask, they, I think they expect it to be back in two thousand twenty, okay? That isn't going to happen. I ask them to, well, do you want, do we do this ordinance or does it, just wait until you come back and test it again? Because from the results that they got this last time, the the domestic wells were all under the under the level. And so you just wait until the next time they come back, but he said that, I I think because of either money, time, and manpower, maybe in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two or not until whenever they get to it. Like you said, they've got wells out there monitoring wells, and I suspect they'll come back for in their process, but he wasn't at least able to give the, oh, yeah, we'll be back there, blah, blah, blah. It's 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 on the, it's on the horizon, but maybe a couple of horizons over before they get back. And just so that people understand is that from the tests that they were able to do and going in there that they're looking at a situation, you're looking at a situation where, as you logically think, with a with a confined amount of contaminant that they've removed, each year it gets better and better and better. I mean, it, to have it go back the other way, I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but the the logic. but the logic of it is it, each rain, each rain you get or whatever that disseminates it, it gets better rather than worse. That's the idea. That's why they've come up with this amendment, have the well tested before the people actually got off.
I think my concerns were set in the presence, not just in this case, but maybe other areas within the community.
Mr. Mayor, I did come up with one more question, if I could.
Councilor Goble.
How long have these wells tested clean, Mr. Speaker?
They did, they did the last test, it was two thousand fifteen when they did it.
And it was clean then in two thousand fifteen?
Right.
So it's been twenty-two years since this man-made spill? And in two thousand fifteen, which was five years ago, it was clean? So it's been clean for five years?
Well, the one before that was two thousand and eight. And I knew that they approved, I didn't see the figures on that. But in two thousand fifteen, they were, they were below the, below the level. Once they tested, except for the monitoring, not domestic, but as I understand it, the monitoring wells basically right over the, where the contaminant was and a little bit out. Those had some in it. But the domestic wells that they tested all came up okay.
Any other questions, councilors?
I do have a question. The way the ordinance reads, it says at least two well water samples, one from the dry season and one from the wet, the wet season, shall be tested and demonstrate the concentrations of chemicals that are consistently below. The use of the word consistent is kind of interesting because how, if you're just going to take two water samples, how are you going to be sure that they are consistently below? But that's another question. But this doesn't say that it'll be done on a yearly basis. It just says that they will take two samples if we take them.
The idea is, is that they take the two samples, one during the wet, one during the dry, my understanding. And then the person, if they come in and both of those are below the levels, then they unhook.
So did they give us documentation of what the expectation is? And the actual parts per billion on this is that these wells we're testing?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was my issue, though, is those numbers change. So for instance, arsenic used to be at one level and then they cut it in half several years later. Those levels change as science changes. And so my concern with Robert is, because initially we were just talking about putting those numbers literally in the code. It would have to be below this and below this in both of those tests. And I said, well, those numbers can change as science changes. So we get stuck, just like we saw in the LID of a number that's antiquated because we haven't revisited it. And if those codes change, we may or may not have knowledge of that. Which is why I asked Robert, hey, why don't we, instead of us setting the standard, let's have DEQ set the standard, let's have DEQ sign off on it. And then that's going to give DEQ record. And then we would just approve them doing the work and disconnecting and doing whatever they want to do. But again, all of that approval process is on DEQ and not on us.
How many properties are we talking about?
As far as, not so, as far as I can tell, you're talking, if you look at the map and I think it's like thirty-ish some to over thirty.
Thirty properties, okay. And do we have wells serving more than one household on those?
I don't know. I don't know. It could vary. It's hard to read their stuff because they talk about wells and then they'll divide them up into monitoring wells and domestic wells. And you don't know what figure that the one was before. So from county dogs, I got thirty, thirty-five-ish, thirty-five, thirty-eight wells out there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Nash.
If, if they were allowed to hook up for irrigation only for like, say, two years and cycle the water out and once it refills, I mean, it's going to be bringing in any other sediment that's can be brought into the waters with consistent testing and proof that that well was, that well can sustain the levels that are needed and then be allowed to hook up to drinkable water.
My concern is the management of that. Who's going to oversee it? Who's going to keep track of it? Who's going to keep up with any of the changing science and those changing numbers? It, that would be my concern if enough of these people, and then what if we miss? What if one slips through the cracks? And where are we at with the liability related to that? I don't believe there are any other cities that monitor domestic wells. And that's all left to the county and to the state. And I think that's the reason. It's just, they already have to keep track, to keep track of all of them. And we don't set the rules for those. I mean, I guess if you really wanted to engage in that, we could do a whole water monitoring ordinance, which talked about requirements and how we would handle that. But that would just be my concern is if you're pretty much in the business of monitoring domestic wells, I think my guess is we would probably be the only city in the state that gets into that.
We don't want to get into that.
I don't think so. And any county or state regulations would override ours anyways.
And if you choose to monitor a few, then.
You're going to do it for all.
Do it for all.
Yep. Again, remember, this is from well, city, back to well. This is not just establishing a well.
Well, I think that they had to come into the city water system because of the situation. Not that they wanted to, they had to. And so I think that if all costs of hooking up or dishooking up or coming back is bored by them and it's their well, they should be able to do that.
Is there any liability to the city to allow this?
That was, again, our discussion, which is why we tried to write this so that everything had to be approved by DEQ and not by us. We're not doing anything other than directing them to DEQ, getting DEQ to sign off on it. And then we will allow them, we'll remove the meter and cap our service. But other than that, they will do all of their work and pay for all of their own testing.
Then again, something happens, they come back and then, I mean, you're doing this.
But they have to pay the cost.
Right.
Yeah, but still, every time, uncapping, capping, uncapping, cap.
That might happen, but the, one of the reasons why I'm here is because it, because the last testing came back and it was showing that everybody was under.
Concerns, anyway. Any other questions, councilors?
We can't make these decisions based on revenue. We're not supposed to.
I'm not thinking about revenue here.
So we have to base it solely on, do they, are they got the green light? Is it clear to do this on your own property with your own water, you know, and bear that cost yourself if you want to do it, you know?
Well, I guess there's a question if it's with their own water.
I mean.
I don't want that discussion.
Oh, I'm just saying.
Let's not go there.
Saying, some of those lots are really close together.
This is a fascinating discussion because this is very, this goes towards a lot of independent philosophical beliefs in the role of government and property rights and water rights. This is, this is a big discussion for you all to have because it weighs many, many different things that will get to, honestly, the core and foundation of your beliefs on government and the role of government. This is great, I love this.
Well, it's just, for me, in looking at that map, those lots are really close together, really close together. So if you have a well here and a well here and a well here and a well here and you start tapping water here and here, that's what I'm saying, whose water are you tapping? I mean, you know. And also, we have, in some of that area that I saw on the map, we have a lot of people who have large shops with all kinds of stuff that tends to get into the ground, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not saying, I'm just saying that there are a lot of things that have to be considered in this when you start.
We're not in the monitoring business.
I know you're not, but I'm just saying tapping well water in the city, how socially responsible is that? I'm just saying, that's all I'm asking.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have that same situation down off of Eighteenth Avenue.
That's.
You know? And so, and you're absolutely right. So you have a water stream that goes through there and there's four houses on it. The guy at the end might not have any water. So this is tough for me, it's tough.
You're setting a presence, even though this is over here.
Yes.
The presence, down here, we can do it now.
And yet would DEQ sign off on it like they're on this?
Exactly. You're opening a can of worms in a pen.
I'm just surprised DEQ would even be allowing this, to tell you the truth.
Exactly.
Because they're choosing to, they're allowing to monitor it and test it. It gives them some authority in it. But normally, I'm just surprised that they're even considering it. If they're considering it, I'm more apt to consider it because I think that they set their standards high.
Well, Mr. Mayor, what are they going to, what are we going to do if we tell them no and they appeal it? And then the DAQ says, hey, you're going to have to do that? I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah.
Their appeal would be.
You are in trouble.
Their appeal would be to a court.
Yes.
They would be challenging the validity of our ordinance.
But every one of these people, I know how people talk. They're going to go to their neighbor and say, you know, what's your workflow like, right? Did this first, you know, you know, how many gallons per minute are you getting? And then they're going to go to the next one before they invest. Because if it goes down, they're not going to do it.
Well, I like the, you're setting the presence, I'm telling you.
Yeah, especially in the summertime.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Goble.
I have, you know, I'm kind of more leaning towards Councilor Nash's idea. I mean, I like that because they said, but, Mr. Snyder, you said there was two houses that was tested, had good water? Out of, and then you said there's like thirty properties?
No, what I said, what I meant to say was, is that the wells that they tested, I believe, were eighteen domestic wells, this last time they got the eighteen domestic wells, and all of them were okay. All of them are underneath the standards that the state and state said.
So it would be reasonable to me that anybody that has a well, whether it's one of these properties or not, before they would use it even for watering their plants, for their gardens and things, they should have that tested themselves. So if you only have eighteen and there's potentially thirty, then they should all be asked to do that with DEQ, all of them, and anybody else. Because we have people out there who have wells that have arsenic in them and they shouldn't be watering their vegetables with arsenic.
You're talking one area of the community, but there's other areas and.
The whole thing.
Nobody will be able to disconnect from city water and connect to their well without DEQ approval, is how we've written this.
Okay.
So this form will be required for every single property.
Everybody.
That wants to connect back to their well. So DEQ will approve every single one of their applications before we will allow them to disconnect and connect to.
Wow, seeing how slow DEQ was on the mill property. I'm wondering what kind of.
That long.
We may not.
Yeah.
But DEQ's been very kind to us.
Well, I know.
On the waste water treatment.
The gentleman I've been talking to is really, is very responsive. I'm not saying that that he's the one who's going to be doing this, but he's been very.
Any other questions, councilors?
How are we going to explain to our people that we're going to say, no, you can't go onto your own property and use your own well?
I don't have a problem with setting up a separate well. But going back and forth from well to city, back to well, potentially have to go back to city, then back to well, that's always a possibility. And you're talking about this area. But you got other areas in the community and other owners who are standing there watching this saying, oh, look, they did that.
I just don't think DEQ would allow other areas.
You're setting a presence, and that's what I'm concerned about.
In fact, right now, there's nothing stopping any property owner from drilling a well and disconnecting from city water.
True.
Except the cost.
Cost.
So anybody else in the city, well, except for our other cleanup areas.
And then you shut the water off.
Right, so, so for instance, I don't believe any of your homes are in a cleanup area. Any of you could go drill a well and disconnect from city water tomorrow and nothing would stop you. The only thing stopping these people is our ordinance, which was mandated by the state of Oregon. The state of Oregon is now telling us that, that the testing levels are below the threshold and they may approve people who provide them with proof to have that same option. Does that make sense?
So is it fair to have something that anybody can do except them? And they've got the green light from DEQ.
I think there are two areas that are under that anymore. There are three areas in town that are under that same restriction. That's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
I want a raise. I don't know how we stop it.
I don't think we can.
DEQ says it's okay? I don't know how we stop it. I understand what you're talking about. I would highly doubt that anybody that wanted to put the money into going from their city water to a well, if it didn't go dry, they're not coming back. And if they come back, they're going to, they're going to pay. They're going to pay probably dearly, I guess. I don't know what that cost. And, you know, I think, I think Greg Springman could do the testing. He's got all the time in the world to do it. He sits in his office.
Guys, I hate to chime in on this, but we do not have any legal authority over private wells. That's why DEQ is involved. So if DEQ says that can happen, that owner has a right to do that. Where we have a concern is them connecting back at the same time to our system because the rules that regulate a publicly owned system versus a well.
That's what I'm talking about.
They're different, much more intuitive on our end. They only have to do a few things once maybe a year. You don't want to go down that. You don't want.
Thank you, Mr. Spring.
They're going to have their well have it with a full severance, right? That's where I would have concerns.
Thank you, Greg. That's exactly what was my point.
Oh, it's fun, yeah. Yeah, questions, councilors? This point, it's a council directive. You can either just let it win the wind or you can make a motion on it.
I make a motion that Susan Coleman makes the decision.
I hear the.
Oh, my gosh. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table this on next meeting.
I second that motion. I'd like more information.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table this for future discussion. Roll call, please, on that motion.
Councilor Goble.
Aye.
Councilor Coleman.
Aye.
Mayor Muller.
Aye.
Councilor Gerson.
Aye.
Councilor Nash.
Yeah.
Councilor Trask.
Aye.
Councilor Goble.
Yes.
Let the record show of seven yeses and no nays to table for future discussion. Moving on to.
Real quick. So obviously, this is going to come back. My question would be, what other information can we try and provide for you to help you make a decision? Either way, again, we're not, we're not tied to the yea or the nay. Um, but what additional information would you like? I realize all of our brains are probably, maybe a little fried at this point after this discussion. Um, but, so I'm not asking you now, but I guess what I will say is, if you can get us some questions that you need answered to decide yea or nay at the next meeting. The other thing I'll remind you of is our, our system uniquely gives you three shots at this. Um, and remember, each shot is two weeks apart. So you have multiple opportunities to vote yea, nay, or make changes as we go forward.
Mr. Mayor, so, Robert, I would like to know that if DEQ says it's okay, if we have the, I don't wanna say, oh, yeah, if we have the authority to, to refuse to let them do that. Uh, and if, if not, and, I mean, if they say we do not have that, then what is our, what is our path to get to where we need to be? Which will probably be, yes, we gotta do this. I mean, can the DEQ says, yeah, you have to do this, even if we disagree?
I think in talking with them, I think their position is, is, um, it's a city ordinance and if you, if you said, you've shown us enough stuff here that shows the, the wells are, are, are good, just revoke the ordinance and be done with.
Okay.
I think they would, our way, from, from talking. Now, I'll ask them the question to make sure that that's correct.
Okay.
That's my, that would be, but, you know, in talking, I'll just say in talking, you get some answers, but if, you know, when we ask the question, is this, they may come up, well, we-
No, yeah, yeah.
We may wanna monitor it some more, or we may, you know, that sort of thing. Uh, which is understandable, since when you, sometimes when you're talking, you just, you know, you might not be the last word on it.
Okay.
I'll, I'll ask them.
Okay.
So I would like a definition of the word consistently. Well, in this particular ordinance, whether it be yearly, a yearly inspection or whatever, and also I think that if we're going to do this, that we need to have some cost, put into this ordinance of what it would cost if you reconnect and how many times you could connect and reconnect. I think you need to have some parameters on this that, obviously we can't stop them. I don't think we can stop them from doing it, but then we can control, I think we have some authority to control whether you can do this 10 times in the course of owning your property. I don't know. That's the kind of thing I would like to know about, whether we can do this.
I'll, I'll find out those things and, uh, but for the connecting and reconnecting, I think it's been described, I think that would be a fairly costly maneuver for whoever was doing it.
And who bears the cost of doing that?
Well, they will.
They would, half the owner would.
Well, doesn't say so right now.
That's right. You're correct.
I would like to know from Greg and understand better what the mayor was referring to as far as the concerns he has with disconnecting, reconnecting.
He could do a demo, bring his little pipes in here and-
Greg, can you automatically explain this one?
So, yeah, are you talking about the mayor or are you talking about me?
I'm talking about you. I would like to hear from you, but the concerns that the mayor held as well.
So cross connection, right? We've had discussions on cross connection and systems that if there was a fire and low pressures, we could actually pull water out of a building into the system. So my concerns is the level of testing for a private well in the state of Oregon is much less and not as stringent as the requirements for a public system, right? We do weekly, we do monthly, we do semi-annual type testings for a broad amount of constituents that you don't do for a well. Um, so if we're allowing them to dis, they're on our meter, let's, let's start, they have a well and they wanna connect. We would wanna ensure, once they make that connection, prior to that connection, that they have fully severed their well and it's not operational to any type of a domestic type system in their building. Cause that could be fed back into the system. So that water then is not being regulated, but then going into our community water. So the same thing, if, if they've, they're now connected and they wanna go back to that well, we need to make sure that that's fully severed. Um, because their testing is not gonna be what we do as a requirement in the city of-
We, but on that, what on that point specifically, we have a whole, you have a whole ordinance in place for the, for backflows. It's a thing about 13 pages long that's there for that, for that reason.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick. First of all, again, I'm loving this discussion, so maybe, I apologize. Um, but it is 10 after 8 and we've been at this, and we have already passed a motion to table. So I, I think what we're looking for at this point is just additional questions that we can address and then I might suggest that we-
I think Greg had one more final thought, Greg, did you? You started-
Yeah, a, a backflow system would fail if you had a pump on the other side pumping backwards against it. That's all. That is designed to protect a building for cyclones, not a pump system pumping through. So you wouldn't even have a backflow system. It just can't be connected. You would have competing forces, so.
Knowing what Greg is talking about, but I also have a concern with the backflow. Anyway, it's tabled, okay.
If you have any other questions or any other information you want, it should be in the bill. Between Robert, Greg and I, we will get answers as expeditiously as we can.
Okay, moving on, before I move on, you might go ahead and do the public hearing full format? Is that what you're, you're asking? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Uh, moving on to a continuance of public hearing. At this time, I will open up a public hearing, continuance of public hearing. Uh, ordinance number eight, number 2020, text members of Title 15, uh, 12 Flood Hazard Area Regulations at page 10. Opening individually, hearing disclosure statements. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford City Council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise the issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the review criteria. If you have any questions, please wait till appropriate time and then direct questions to the council. Please speak one at a time so the recorder knows who is speaking. Declarations of City Council, and I'll do a roll call. Personal bias. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mayor Muller?
No.
Counselor Gerson? Counselor Nash?
No.
Counselor Trask?
No.
Counselor Goble?
None.
Counselor Gorley?
None.
Counselor Coleman?
No.
Personal bias of any counselors. Moving on to conflict of interest. Have any of the members of the council or immediate family have any financial or other interest application of this to be disclosed? Roll call by conflict of interest.
Mayor Muller?
No.
Counselor Gerson?
No.
Counselor Nash?
No.
Counselor Trask?
No.
Counselor Goble?
No.
Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Coleman?
No.
Let the record show that we have no conflict interest of any of the counselors. Ex parte information. Counselors are bound to base their decisions on the information received in the public hearing and that was presented in testimony. If a member of council has talked with an applicant or has information from outside the public hearing, it needs to be shared at this time so that everyone in the audience has the opportunity to be aware of it and rest of the council is aware of it. In that way, it can be rebutted, excuse me, and can discussed openly. A roll call of ex parte information.
Mayor Muller?
No.
Counselor Gerson?
None.
Counselor Nash?
None.
Counselor Trask?
No.
Counselor Goble?
No.
Counselor Gorley?
No.
Counselor Coleman?
No.
The record show we have no ex parte information of any of the counselors. Uh, staff report, review of application.
Blair, I'll, uh, turn this over to you.
Okay. So, um, as you are probably aware, we currently have a flood hazard area regulations portion of our development code, our city code, and that, um, essentially regulates how any development is to occur within, uh, the flood, flood area. This is heavily influenced by the federal government and, uh, eligibility for the National Flood Insurance Program is dependent upon, uh, the city having, um, a, an ordinance that fits with the federal regulations. And so there recently have been some changes and DEQ is, uh, or, not, sorry, not DEQ. DLCD, uh, has recommended, put together a model code, um, based on federal, federal regulations. And so this model code is what we are seeking to, um, replace our current flood area regulations with. Uh, we've been over this with the, uh, with the Planning Commission and, um, they have recommended, uh, adopting these amendments, um, this essentially new version, and so now it goes before you. Um, since this is a legislative amendment to our code, it requires a plan, a public hearing before the planning commission as well as a public hearing before all of you. And, um, so if you have any questions, I can take them at this time and, but we do need to open it for public comment if there should be any. And, uh, and then if you find it acceptable, we can, you can vote to, uh, move it to the first reading.
Um, I'll begin testimony, um, testimony in favor, testimony of those wishing to speak in favor of the application. Testimony in opposition, testimony for those wishing to speak in opposition of the application. Neutral testimony, testimony of those who are not neither in favor nor in opposition of the application. Open it up for any rebuttal. And I will briefly open up for any potential public input. That said, we will go ahead and close the public hearing at 15 and open up for any council discussions or any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, go ahead.
Counselor Goble, go ahead.
Um, this may sound kinda weird, but how does somebody even get involved in this hearing if we're doing a lot of this live and nobody can come in?
It's awkward.
I can kind of address that. So there are two functions, uh, for which folks can provide public comment. Um, the first is a, what's called a question and answer session in the Microsoft Teams livestream. It allows folks to type questions and interact with, um, me here at the computer that then I can relay to City Council. Um, to this point, we, we posted an announcement basically that the, that the hearing has been opened so they can start posting questions and we've had none at this point. Um, at the same time, folks can also call the 541-367-5128, mainline, mainline number for City Hall. Um, there's a phone tree that's been activated for this timeframe so that if they want to provide public comment to City Council, they press one. And for all other matters, they press two. So it gives folks an option to, to be able to provide public comment to you all, um, to be heard.
Thank you.
If I can also add, one, two, three, four, we do actually have space for five members of the public to be in here, appropriately social distanced, and none are here.
And I briefly delayed between each topic for that reason.
Correct.
Any questions of the counselor, open for discussion.
So I have a question. On page 115, which was also brought up by the planning commission, I noticed about the recreational vehicles. It says that the recreational vehicles are required to be on the site for fewer than 180 consecutive days. Does that mean that if someone has their RV parked for eight months or they can't have their RV parked on their property for eight months, it has to be for just six months? Is that what that means?
So you said on page 115 of, of the packet?
Yes, it's talking about the recreational vehicles.
Mm-hmm. So this is, the reason this is in here is because the, this is, first of all, this is only for the purposes of this particular chapter. Uh, if this is adopted, it would be, this would be limited to just this chapter. It does not mean that any property in the city has the right to have an RV occupy, uh, that property for, uh, fewer than 180 consecutive days. It's essentially just for the definitions of this, um, this particular ordinance. And this is how they have, this is how the feds have, have, uh, decided what is determined to be a recreational vehicle. Because different rules apply to recreational vehicles than to, uh, homes on the, on the property. And so those, those are the terms that they have settled on. We looked into, there were some concerns brought up on this, uh, by the planning commission because, uh, they mentioned that some RVs are a larger size than what's in here. Um, and we looked into the possibility of changing that and essentially we were told that's not something that we have the ability to change. It's, um, it is what it is and unfortunately that's it. Does that, did that answer your question or did it just?
No, I still wanna know is if a person's living in the flood plain and they have an RV, can they park it longer than six months? With this ordinance, it would say not.
For the purposes of this ordinance, that is correct. It would have to be less than that period of time.
So-
We passed that ordinance a while back for that reason.
We did?
It's been a few years back. We went through that in one of our councils.
So any other, for any other purposes, they're not allowed to have a, an RV occupied, um, anywhere near that long. I mean, the only, the only provision of our code that comes close to that is if you are constructing a, um, if you're constructing a whole, if you have a construction site, you can have an RV that you can stay in, uh, for the duration of, uh, for a period of time. I, I believe it's around six months. Um, but for anybody else, you can't occupy an RV, uh, unless it's in an RV park.
So this is talking about if the RV is occupied or is it if it's just placed on site?
My understanding is this is talking about occupied.
Okay, thank you. So having a campground in a flood plain? Right. And somebody running it couldn't stay? Right. Would we even bother with that if they were the managers of a campground?
We're not.
I didn't think- Yeah.
Probably has better things to do.
Yeah.
Especially if it's in a campground.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't say that.
Okay, hypothetically.
Hypothetically. Um, any other questions? Okay. Uh, just moving on to ordinance bills. Do, are we wanting to do six, seven, eight, nine, or?
Well, so we need a, a motion and a second to move number eight to a first read.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second to move it to first reading. Roll call, please.
Counselor Gerson?
Aye.
Counselor Nash?
Sure.
Aye.
Counselor Goble?
Yeah.
Yeah, aye.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
Mayor Muller?
Yes. Let the record show of seven yeses, no nays to move forward. Not directed to show of 7, yeses, no nays to move forward to first reading.
So. So I don't want to be here for the third reading. So just let me know when.
So that's not tonight.
No, good. It is tonight.
You want to do it tonight?
It would be, we technically would be reading two ordinances to.
Okay.
Counselor.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Counselor Nash.
Can I change my vote so I don't have to listen?
I was trying to help you, Nash. Trust me.
Time for a potty break.
Five hours.
I was thinking of you, Counselor Nash.
Thank you.
So we will move forward with first reading of 6 and 7.
6 and 8. Could we make that a? Can you read 6?
I got it.
He's got it by his fancy Irish or whatever.
All right, here we go.
Well, I do think we could use a break, but.
Got to read this whole thing.
Because Nash gets to go and use the facilities and we don't. I'm out of here.
Don't, don't be jealous.
I'm not, I'm leaving.
There it's done.
Ordinance bill, no. 6 for 2020, ordinance, no. Underscore 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 Sweet Home Ordinance amending SHMC Chapter 3.16 pertaining to local improvement districts, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section 1, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.010 titled report from city engineer appointment of viewer's recommendations is changed to read city report appointment of viewer's recommendations and is amended by removing there from the word survey and and or lean upon in the first sentence and by removing the word and comma survey in the second sentence of the section. Section 2, Sweet Home Municipal Code subsection 3.16.060, a second sentence is amended by removing there from the words and charge. Section 3, Sweet Home Municipal Code subsection 3.16.060, B, last sentence is amended by removing there from ours reference 223.595 and inserting ours reference 223.650. Section 4, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.100 is amended by removing there from the words a lean upon or where it appears twice therein and inserting the word and in place thereof. Section 5, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.120, last sentence is amended to read as follows. The decision of the judge or verdict of the jury shall be a final and conclusive determination of the matter of the assessment, except with respect to the city's right of reassessment as provided in this chapter. Section 6, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.140 is amended to read as follows. The purpose of this article is to permit qualified senior citizens to have deferred to special assessments that may be levied against their residences for improvements. Section 7, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.160, the first line of text is amended to read as follows, to qualify for the senior citizen's assessment deferral program. Section 8, Sweet Home Municipal Code subsection 3.16.160, see the first sentence to read as follows. See, the senior citizen shall have a gross annual income not to exceed $18,210, and if he or she is married, then their joint gross annual income shall not exceed $24,462, and further, not to exceed an increase of more than $1,100 for each additional dependent that is living with them at the time of the application and during the calendar year preceding the one in which the assessment is to be levied. Section 9, Sweet Home Municipal Code subsection 3.16.170, the title deferral of assessment and charges is changed to read deferral of assessment and is amended to read as follows. To the extent that funds are conveniently available to the city, a qualified senior citizen may choose to have deferred to special assessment for improvements that is to be or has been levied against his or her residence. The assessment may be deferred, even if a part thereof has been paid. The assessment shall bear interest at the rate of 7% per annum from the date that the assessment is levied against the residence and until paid, and shall be comped when the property ceases to be the residence of the senior citizen or his or her spouse. This may be by reason of the sale or rental of the property, or the death of both the senior citizen and his or her spouse, or for any other reason whatsoever. Section 10, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.180 is amended by removing there from the words deferred special assessments and charges and inserting the words deferred special assessment in place thereof. Section 11, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.190, titled assessment and charges to be a lean, is changed to read assessment to be a lean, and is amended to read as follows. Any assessment that is deferred by the terms of this Article 2 shall become a lean on the land just as though this Article 2 had not been adopted. When the assessment becomes due by the terms of SHMC 3.16.170 of this Article 2, it may be enforced and collected as though it had not been deferred. Section 12, Sweet Home Municipal Code Section 3.16.200 is amended to read as follows. A qualified senior citizen who elects to have an assessment deferred pursuant to the provisions of this Article 2 shall enter into a contract with the city, as may be required by the city, passed by the council and approved by the mayor this underscore date of underscore underscore underscore.
Blank 2020, blank mayor, attest, blank city manager, ex officio city recorder.
Okay, any questions to counselors? If not, any directive to move forward? By roll call. Have a motion? Motion second, roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Will it be title only next time?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, please.
Counselor Tross.
Yes.
Counselor Goble.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Not directed to show of 7, yeses, no nays to move it forward for second reading on May 12th at, by title only, that time. Ordinance number 8, first reading, need a directive moving forward for reading, or first reading.
Come on, Nash, let's go.
Where we going?
I think we can just read it, because you already did the.
Yeah, I just, I need to read.
Reading for me is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Ordinance bill, no. 8 for 2020, ordinance, no. Underscore 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 underscore, an ordinance amending the Sweet Home Municipal Code Chapter 15.12, flood hazard area regulations, whereas the state of Oregon has in whose 197.175 cities and counties planning responsibilities, delegated the responsibility to local governmental units to adopt flood plain management regulations designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizenry, whereas these flood plain management regulations include Sweet Home Municipal Code Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulation. The FEMA flood insurance study dated the 29th of September 2010 and the revised date the 27th of December 2012, and the flood insurance rate map stated the 29th of September 2010, whereas, after coordination between the State Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, and the city, and as a member of the National Flood Insurance Program, the city initiated these text changes to SHMC Title 15 Building and Construction, Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulation, to amend the city. Flood Hazard Area Regulations, whereas, pursuant to whose 197.610 submission of proposed comprehensive plan or land use regulation changes to Department of Land Conservation and Development, DLCD, the city provided DLCD with Form 1 notice of these proposed SHMC Title 15 Building and Construction, Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulation, text changes on the 7th of February 2020, whereas, the Planning Commission held a public work session on the 2nd of March 2020 to provide an open forum for discussion of the amendments to Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulation, whereas, the City Council held a public work session on the 10th of March 2020 to provide an open forum for discussion of the amendments to Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulation, whereas, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the 6th of April 2020 for the proposed amendments to Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulation, whereas, the Planning Commission followed the text amendment procedures under Chapter 2.20.90 powers and duties, and has provided a report to the City Council along with its recommendation to consider the proposed text changes, whereas, the City Council held a public hearing on these proposed text changes on the 14th of April 2020 and continued the public hearing to the 28th of April 2020. Now therefore, the city of Sweet Home does ordain as follows. Section 1, Sweet Home Municipal Code Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulations is amended to read as follows. Chapter 15.12 flood hazard area regulations 15.12.010 statutory authorization. The state of Oregon has in whose 197.175 cities and counties planning responsibilities, delegated the responsibility to local governmental units to adopt flood plain management regulations designed to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizenry. 15.12.015 findings of fact. The flood hazard areas of the city of Sweet Home are subject to periodic inundation which may result in loss of life and property, health and safety hazards, disruption of commerce and governmental services, extraordinary public expenditures for flood protection and relief, and impairment of the tax base, all of which adversely affect the public health, safety, and general welfare. B, these flood losses may be caused by the cumulative effect of obstructions in special flood hazard areas which increase flood heights and velocities, and when inadequately anchored, cause damage in other areas. Uses that are inadequately flood proofed, elevated, or otherwise protected from flood damage also contribute to flood loss. 15.12.020 statement of purpose. It is the purpose of this chapter to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, and to minimize public and private losses due to flooding in flood hazard areas by provisions designed to, a, protect human life and health, b, minimize expenditure of public money for costly flood control projects, c, minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts associated with flooding and generally undertaken at the expense of the general public, d, minimize prolonged business interruptions, e, minimize damage to public facilities such as water and gas mains, electric, telephone and steel lines, and streets and bridges located in special flood hazard areas, f, to help maintain a stable tax base by providing for the sound use and development of flood hazard areas so as to minimize blight areas caused by flooding, g, notify potential buyers that the property is in a special flood hazard area, h, notify those who occupy special flood hazard areas that they assume responsibility for their actions i participated and maintain eligibility for flood insurance and disaster relief. 15.12.025 methods of reducing flood losses. In order to accomplish its purposes, this chapter includes methods and provisions for a restricting or prohibiting development which is dangerous to health, safety, and property due to water or erosion hazards, or which result in damaging increases in erosion or in flood heights or velocities, b, requiring that development vulnerable to floods, including facilities which serve such uses, be protected against flood damage at the time of initial construction, c, controlling the alteration of natural flood plains, stream channels, and natural protective barriers which help accommodate or channel floodwaters, decontrolling filling, grading, dredging, and other development which may increase flood damage, b, preventing or regulating the construction of flood barriers which will unnaturally divert floodwaters or may increase flood hazards in other areas. 15.12.030 definitions. Unless specifically defined below, words or phrases used in this chapter shall be interpreted so as to give them the meaning they have in common usage. Appeal, a request for review of the interpretation of any provision of this chapter or a request for variance. Area of shallow flooding, a designated zone O, R, A forward slash A, or A forward slash R on a community's flood insurance rate map, F, with a 1% or greater annual chance of flooding to anotherage depth of 1 to 3 feet.
So on E, no, on 15.12.030 definitions, it says, it does not say ordinance, it says, what did it say, chapter, or something like that. It doesn't say ordinance. When she read it, it didn't say. So is that going to be an issue or not?
It's supposed to be that way. Because these are within the code, and these are definitions specifically just for this chapter.
Well, thank you. Moving along.
Where clearly defined channel does not exist, where the path of flooding is unpredictable, and where velocity flow may be evident. Such flooding is characterized by potting or sheet foam. Area of special flood hazard, the land in the flood plain within a community subject to a 1% or greater chance of flooding in any given year. It is shown on the flood insurance rate map, F, as so known, A, O, R, A 1-30, A, A 99, R. Special flood hazard area is synonymous in meaning and definition with the phrase area of special flood hazard. Base flood, a flood having a 1% chance of being equalled or exceeded in any given year. Base flood elevation, BFE, the elevation to which floodwater is anticipated to rise during the base flood. Basement, any area of the building having its floors upgrade below ground level on all sites. Building, C, structure, critical facility, means a facility for which even a slight chance of flooding might be too great. Critical facilities include, but are not limited to, schools, nursing homes, hospitals, police, fire, and emergency response installations, installations which produce, use, or store hazardous materials or hazardous waste. Development, any manmade change to improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation or drilling operations, or storage of equipment, materials. Flood or flooding, one, a general and temporary condition of partial or complete inundation of normally dry land areas from, A, the overflow of inland or tidal waters, B, the unusual and rapid accumulation or runoff of surface waters from any source, C, mudslides, i.e. mudflows, which are approximately caused by flooding as defined in paragraph A, 2, of this definition and are akin to a river of liquid and flowing mud on the surfaces of normally dry land areas, as when earth is carried by a current of water and deposited along the path of the current. 2, the collapse or subsidence of land along the shore of a lake or other body of water as a result of erosion or undermining caused by waves or currents of water exceeding anticipated cyclical levels or suddenly caused by an unusually high water level in a natural body of water accompanied by a severe storm, or by an unanticipated force of nature such as flash flood or an abnormal tidal surge, or by some similarly unusual and unforeseeable event which results in flooding as defined in paragraph A, 1, of this definition. Flood elevation study, an examination, evaluation, and determination of flood hazards and, if appropriate, corresponding water surface elevations, or an examination, evaluation, and determination of mudslide, i.e. mudflow, and forward slash or flood-related erosion hazards. Flood insurance rate map, F, the official map of a community on which the federal insurance administrator has delineated both the special hazard areas and the risk premium zones applicable to the community. A firm that has been made available digitally is called a digital flood insurance rate map, F. Flood insurance study, FIS, see flood elevation study. Flood proofing, any combination of structural and nonstructural additions, changes, or adjustments to structures which reduce or eliminate risk of flood damage to real estate or improved real property, water and seismic facilities, structures, and their contents. Floodway, the channel of a river or other watercourse and the adjacent land areas that must be reserved in order to discharge the base flood without cumulatively increasing the water surface elevation more than a designated height, also referred to as regulatory floodway. Functionally dependent use, a use which cannot perform its intended purpose unless it is located or carried out in close proximity to water. The term includes only docking facilities, port facilities that are necessary for the loading and unloading of cargo or passengers, and shipbuilding and ship repair facilities, and does not include long-term storage or related manufacturing facilities. Highest adjacent grade, the highest natural elevation of the ground surface prior to construction next to the proposed walls of a structure. Historic structure, any structure that is. One listed individually in the National Register of Historic Places, a listing maintained by the Department of Interior, or preliminarily determined by the Secretary of the Interior as meeting the requirements for individual listing on the National Register, 2. Certified or preliminarily determined by the Secretary of the Interior as contributing to the historical significance of the registered historic district or a district preliminarily determined by the Secretary to qualify as a registered historic district, 3. Individually listed on a state inventory of historic places in states with historic preservation programs which have been approved by the Secretary of Interior, or 4. Individually listed on a local inventory of historic places in communities with historic preservation programs that have been certified either, A, by an approved state program as determined by the Secretary of the Interior, or B, directly by the Secretary of the Interior in states without approved programs. Letter of map change, LOMA, means an official FEMA determination, by letter, to amend or revise effective flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance studies. The following are categories of LOMCs, unconditional letter of map amendment, CLAM, a CLAM is FEMA's comment on a proposed structure or group of structures that would, upon construction, be located on existing natural ground above the base, 1% annual change, flood elevation on a portion of a legally defined parcel of land that is partially inundated by the base flood. Two conditional letter of map revision, CLOM, a CLOM is FEMA's comment on a proposed project that would, upon construction, affect the hydrologic or hydraulic characteristics of a flooding source and thus result in the modification of the existing regulatory floodway, the effective base flood elevations, or the special flood hazard area. Three conditional letter of map revision based OM fill, CLOMF, a CLOMF is FEMA's comment on a proposed project that would, upon construction, result in a modification of the special flood hazard area through the placement of fill outside the existing regulatory floodway. Four letter of map amendment, LOMA, an official amendment, by letter, to the flood insurance rate maps, F, based on technical data showing that an existing structure, parcel of land or portion of a parcel of land that is naturally high ground, i.e., has not been elevated by fill, above the base flood, that was inadvertently included in the special flood hazard area. Five letter of map revision, LOM, a LOM is FEMA's modification to an effective flood insurance rate map, F, or flood boundary and floodway map, FBFM, or both. LOMAs are generally based on the implementation of physical measures that affect the hydrologic or hydraulic characteristics of a flooding source and thus result in the modification of the existing regulatory floodway, the effective base flood elevations, or the SFH. LOM officially revises the F or FBFM, and sometimes the flood insurance study, FIS, report, and, when appropriate, includes a description of the modifications. The LOM is generally accompanied by an annotated copy of the affected portions of the F, FBFM, or FIS report.
That was the first case in Oregon.
Sees letter of map revision based on fill, LOMF, a LOMF is FEMA's modification of the special flood hazard area shown on the flood insurance rate map, F.
Just got moved out of ICA.
Outside the existing regulatory floodway. Seven PMR, a PMR is FEMA's physical revision and republication of an effective flood insurance rate map, F, or flood insurance study, FIS, report. PMRs are generally based on physical measures that affect the hydrologic or hydraulic characteristics of a flooding source and thus result in the modification of the existing regulatory floodway, the effective base flood elevations, or the special flood hazard area. Lowest floor, the lowest floor of the lowest enclosed area, including basement. An unfinished or flood-resistant enclosure, usable solely for parking of vehicles, building access or storage in an area other than a basement area is not considered a building's lowest floor, provided that such enclosure is not built so as to render the structure in violation of the applicable non-elevation design requirements of this chapter. Manufactured dwelling, a structure, transportable in one or more sections, which is built on a permanent chassis and is designed for use with or without a permanent foundation when attached to the required utilities. The term manufactured dwelling does not include a recreational vehicle and is synonymous with. The term manufactured dwelling does not include a recreational vehicle and is synonymous with manufactured homes. Manufactured dwelling park or subdivision: A parcel, or contiguous parcels, of land divided into two or more manufactured dwelling lots for rent or sale. Means sea level. For purposes of the National Flood Insurance Program, the National Geodetic Vertical Data, NGVD, of nineteen twenty-nine or other data to which base flood elevations shown on a community's flood insurance rate map are referenced. New construction: For floodplain management purposes, new construction means structures for which the start of construction commenced on or after the effective date of a floodplain management regulation adopted by the city of Sweet Home and includes any subsequent improvements to such structures. Recreational vehicle: A vehicle which is, one, built on a single chassis, two, four hundred square feet or less when measured at the largest horizontal projection, three, designed to be self-propelled or permanently towable by light duty truck, and four, designed primarily not for use as a permanent dwelling but as temporary living quarters for recreational, camping, travel, or seasonal use. Special flood hazard area: See area of special flood hazard for this definition. Start of construction: Includes substantial improvement and means the date the building permit was issued, provided the actual start of construction, repair, reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, placement, or other improvement was within one hundred and eighty days from the date of the permit. The actual start means either the first placement of permanent construction of a structure on a site, such as the pouring of slab or footings, the installation of piles, the... Construction of columns, or any work beyond the stage of excavation, or the placement of a manufactured dwelling on a foundation. Permanent construction does not include land preparation, such as clearing, grading, and filling, nor does it include the installation of streets and forward slash or walkways, nor does it include excavation for a basement, footings, piers, or foundations or the erection of temporary forms, nor does it include the installation on the property of accessory buildings, such as garages or sheds not occupied as dwelling units or not part of the main structure. For substantial improvement, the actual start of construction means the first alteration of any wall, ceiling, floor, or other structural part of a building, whether or not that alteration affects the external dimensions of the building. Structure: For floodplain management purposes, a walled and roofed building, including a gas or liquid storage tank, that is principally above ground, as well as a manufactured dwelling. Substantial damage: Damage of any origin sustained by a structure whereby the cost of restoring the structure to its before-damaged condition would equal or exceed fifty percent of the market value of the structure before the damage occurred. Substantial improvement: Any reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or other improvement of the structure, the cost of which equals or exceeds fifty percent of the market value of the structure before the start of construction of the improvement. This term includes structures which have incurred substantial damage regardless of the actual repair work performed. The term does not, however, include either, one, any project for improvement of a structure to correct existing violations of state or local health, sanitary, or safety code specifications which have been identified by the local code enforcement official and which are the minimum necessary to assure safe living conditions, or two, any alteration of a historic structure provided that the alteration will not preclude the structure's continued designation as a historic structure. Variance: A grant of relief by the city of Sweet Home from the terms of a floodplain management regulation. Violation: The failure of a structure or other development to be fully compliant with the community's floodplain management regulations. A structure or other development without the elevation certificate, other certifications, or other evidence of compliance required in this chapter is presumed to be in violation until such time as that documentation is provided. Fifteen dot twelve dot zero four zero lands to which this chapter applies. This chapter shall apply to all special flood hazard areas within the jurisdiction of the city of Sweet Home. Fifteen dot twelve dot zero five zero basis for establishing the special flood hazard areas. The special flood hazard areas identified by the federal insurance administrator in a scientific and engineering report entitled "The Flood Insurance Study," FIS, for flood insurance study for Lynn County, Oregon and Incorporated areas, dates of the twenty-ninth of September, two thousand and ten, and the revised date the twenty-seventh of December, two thousand and twelve, with accompanying flood insurance rate maps, FERMs. All one zero four three C zero eight nine five G, four one zero four three C zero nine one one G, four one zero four three C zero nine one two G, four one zero four three C zero nine one three G, four one zero four three C zero nine one four G, four one zero four three C zero nine one six G, four one zero four three C zero nine one seven G, four one zero four three C zero nine one eight G, and four one zero four three C zero nine one nine G are hereby adopted by reference and declared to be a part of this chapter. The FIS and FERM panels are on file at the city of Sweet Home City Hall, thirty-two twenty-five Main Street, Sweet Home, Oregon. Fifteen dot twelve dot zero five five coordination with State of Oregon specialty codes. Pursuant to the requirement established in Chapter four hundred and fifty-five that the city of Sweet Home administers and enforces the State of Oregon specialty codes, the city of Sweet Home does hereby acknowledge that the Oregon specialty codes contain certain provisions that apply to the design and construction of buildings and structures located in special flood hazard areas. Therefore, this chapter is intended to be administered and enforced in conjunction with the Oregon specialty codes. Fifteen dot twelve dot zero six zero compliance and penalties for non-compliance. A compliance: All development within special flood hazard areas is subject to the terms of this chapter and required to comply with its provisions and all other applicable regulations. B penalties for non-compliance: No structure or land shall hereafter be constructed, located, extended, converted, or altered without full compliance with the terms of this chapter and other applicable regulations. Violations of the provisions of this chapter by failure to comply with any of its requirements, including violations of conditions and safeguards established in connection with conditions, shall constitute a violation and may be prosecuted under the provisions of Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter nine point three six, and any amendments thereto. Abatement of the violations of this Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point one two can be accomplished by any remedy open to the city, including using the procedures set out in Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter eight point zero four for abatement of nuisances. Each day that a violation exists is a separate offense. Nothing contained herein shall prevent the city of Sweet Home from taking such other lawful action as is necessary to prevent or remedy any violation. Fifteen dot twelve dot zero six five abbreviation and severability. An abbreviation: This chapter is not intended to repeal, abbreviate, or impair any existing easements, covenants, or deed restrictions. However, where this chapter and another ordinance, easement, covenant, or deed restriction conflict or overlap, whichever imposes the more stringent restrictions shall prevail. B severability: This chapter and the various parts thereof are hereby declared to be severable. If any section, clause, sentence, or phrase of the chapter is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, then said holding shall in no way affect the validity of the remaining portions of this chapter. Fifteen dot twelve dot zero seven zero interpretation: In the interpretation and application of this chapter, all provisions shall be, are considered as minimum requirements, be liberally construed in favor of the governing body, and see deemed neither to limit nor repeat any other powers granted under state statutes. Fifteen dot twelve dot zero eight zero warning and disclaimer of liability. A warning: The degree of flood protection required by this chapter is considered reasonable for regulatory purposes and is based on scientific and engineering considerations. Larger floods can and will occur on rare occasions. Flood heights may be increased by man-made or natural causes. This chapter does not imply that land outside the areas of special flood hazards or uses permitted within such areas will be free from flooding or flood damages. B disclaimer of liability: This chapter shall not create liability on the part of the city of Sweet Home, any officer or employee thereof, or the federal insurance administrator for any flood damages that result from reliance on this chapter or any administrative decision lawfully made or under. Fifteen dot twelve dot one hundred designation of the floodplain administrator. The city manager and the city manager's designing is hereby appointed to administer, implement, and enforce this chapter by granting or denying development permits in accordance with its provisions. The floodplain administrator may delegate authority to implement these provisions. Fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty duties and responsibilities of the floodplain administrator. Duties of the floodplain administrator, or their designing, shall include, but not be limited to, a permit review. Review all development permits to determine that, one, the permit requirements of this chapter have been satisfied; two, all other required local, state, and federal permits have been obtained and approved; three, review all development permits to determine if the proposed development is located in a floodway. If located in the floodway, assure that the floodway provisions of this chapter in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty are met, and four. Review all development permits to determine if the proposed development is located in an area where base flood elevation, BFE, data is available either through the flood insurance study, FIS, or from another authoritative source. If BFE data is not available, then ensure compliance with the provisions of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, G, and five. Provide to building officials the base flood elevation, BFE, and free board, applicable to any building requiring a development permit. Six, review all development permit applications to determine if the proposed development qualifies as a substantial improvement as defined in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot zero three zero. Seven, review all development permits to determine if the proposed development activity is a watercourse alteration. If a watercourse alteration is proposed, ensure compliance with the provisions in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, A. Eight, review all development permits to determine if the proposed development activity includes the placement of fill or excavation. B information to be obtained and maintained. The following information shall be obtained and maintained and shall be made available for public inspection as needed. One, obtain, record, and maintain the actual elevation in relation to mean sea level of the lowest floor, including basements, and all attendant utilities of all new or substantially improved structures where base flood elevation, BFE, data is provided through the flood insurance study, FIS, flood insurance rate map, FER, or obtained in accordance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, G. Two, obtain and record the elevation in relation to mean sea level of the natural grade of the building site for a structure prior to the start of construction and the placement of any fill, and ensure that the requirements of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty and fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, B, are adhered to. Three, upon placement of the lowest floor of a structure, including basement, but prior to further vertical construction, obtain documentation, prepared and sealed by a professional licensed surveyor or engineer, certifying the elevation in relation to mean sea level of the lowest floor, including basement. Four, where base flood elevation data are utilized, obtain as well certification of the elevation in relation to mean sea level of the lowest floor, including basement, prepared and sealed by a professional licensed surveyor or engineer, prior to the final inspection. Five, maintain all elevation certificates, EC, submitted to the city of Sweet Home, six. Obtain, record, and maintain the elevation in relation to mean sea level to which the structure and all attendant utilities were floodproofed for all new or substantially improved floodproofed structures where allowed under this chapter and where base flood elevation, BFE, data is provided through the FIS, FER, or obtained in accordance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty, G. Seven, maintain all floodproofing certificates required under this chapter, eight. Record and maintain all variance actions, including justification for their issuance, nine. Obtain and maintain all hydrologic and hydraulic analyses performed as required under SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty. Ten, record and maintain all substantial improvement and substantial damage calculations and determinations as required under SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, F. Eleven, maintain for public inspection all records pertaining to the provisions of this chapter. See community boundary alterations. The floodplain administrator shall notify the federal insurance administrator in writing whenever the boundaries of the community have been modified by annexation or the community has otherwise assumed authority or no longer has authority to adopt and enforce floodplain management regulations for a particular area, to ensure that all flood hazard boundary maps, FHPM, and flood insurance rate maps, FER, accurately represent the community's boundaries. Include within such notification a copy of a map of the community suitable for reproduction, clearly delineating the new corporate limits or new area for which the community has assumed or relinquished floodplain management regulatory authority. D watercourse alterations: Notify adjacent communities, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and other appropriate state and federal agencies prior to any alteration or relocation of a watercourse, and submit evidence of such notification to the federal insurance administration. This notification shall be provided by the applicant to the federal insurance administration as a letter of map revision, NOM, along with either: One, a proposed maintenance plan to assure the flood-carrying capacity within the altered or relocated portion of the watercourse is maintained, or two. Certification by registered professional engineer that the project has been designed to retain its flood-carrying capacity without periodic maintenance. The applicant shall be required to submit a conditional letter of map revision, CLOM, when required under SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, E. Pinch your compliance with all applicable requirements in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, E, and fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty, A. E requirement to submit new technical data. A community's base flood elevations may increase or decrease resulting from physical changes affecting flooding conditions. As soon as practicable, but not later than six months after the date such information becomes available, a community shall notify the federal insurance administrator of the changes by submitting technical or scientific data in accordance with Section forty-four of the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR, subsection sixty-five point three. The community may require the applicant to submit such data and review fees required for compliance with this section through the applicable FEMA letter of map change, LOMIC, process. The floodplain administrator shall require a conditional letter of map revision prior to the issuance of a floodplain development permit for, one, proposed floodway encroachments that increase the base flood elevation, and two, proposed development which increases the base flood elevation by more than one foot in areas where FEMA has provided base flood elevations but no floodway. An applicant shall notify FEMA within six, six, months of project completion when an applicant has obtained a conditional letter of map revision, CLOM, from FEMA. This notification to FEMA shall be provided as a letter of map revision, NOM. The applicant shall be responsible for preparing all technical data to support CLOM forward slash NOM applications and pay any processing or application fees associated with the CLOM forward slash NOMF. The floodplain administrator shall be under no obligation to sign the community acknowledgement form, which is part of the CLOM forward slash NOM application, until the applicant demonstrates that the project law has met the requirements of this code and all applicable state and federal laws. F substantial improvement and substantial damage assessments and determinations. Conduct substantial improvement, SI, as defined in Section two point zero, reviews for all structural development proposal applications and maintain a record of SI calculations within permit files in accordance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, B. Conduct substantial damage, SD, as defined in Section two point zero, assessments when structures are damaged due to a natural hazard event or other causes. Make SD determinations whenever structures within the special flood hazard area, as established in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot zero five zero, are damaged to the extent that the cost of restoring the structure to its before-damaged condition would equal or exceed fifty percent of the market value of the structure before the damage occurred. Fifteen dot twelve dot one thirty establishment of development permit. A floodplain development permit required. A development permit shall be obtained before construction or development begins within any area horizontally within the special flood. Hazard area established in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot zero five zero. The development permit shall be required for all structures, including manufactured dwellings and for all other development, as defined in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot zero three zero, including fill and other development activities. B application for development permit. Application for a development permit may be made on forms furnished by the floodplain administrator and may include, but not be limited to, plans in duplicate drawn to scale showing the nature, location, dimensions, and elevations of the area in question, existing or proposed structures, fill, storage of materials, drainage facilities, and the location of the foregoing. Specifically, the following information is required: One, in riverine flood zones, the proposed elevation in relation to mean sea level of the lowest floor, including basement, and all attendant utilities of all new and substantially improved structures, in accordance with the requirements of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, B. Two, proposed elevation in relation to mean sea level to which any non-residential structure will be floodproofed. Three, certification by registered professional engineer or architect licensed in the state of Oregon that the floodproofing methods proposed for any non-residential structure meet the floodproofing criteria for non-residential structures in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, C, three. Four, description of the extent to which any watercourse will be altered or relocated. Five, base flood elevation data for subdivision proposals or other development when required per SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, A, and fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty, F. Six, substantial improvement calculation for any improvement, addition, reconstruction, renovation, or rehabilitation of an existing structure. Seven, the amount and location of any fill or excavation activities proposed. Fifteen dot twelve dot one forty variance procedure: The issuance of a variance is for floodplain management purposes only. Flood insurance premium rates are determined by federal statute according to actuarial risk and will not be modified by the granting of a variance. A conditions for variances: One, generally, variances may be issued for new construction and substantial improvements to be erected on a lot of one-half acre or less in size contiguous surrounded by lots with existing structures constructed below the base flood level, in conformance with the provisions of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one forty, three, and, five, and fifteen dot twelve dot one forty, C. As the lot size increases beyond one-half acre, the technical justification required for issuing a variance increases. Two, variances shall only be issued upon a determination that the variance is the minimum necessary, considering the flood hazard, to afford relief. Three, variances shall not be issued within any floodway if any increase in flood levels during the base flood discharge would result. Four, variances shall only be issued upon: A, a showing of good and sufficient cause; B, a determination that failure to grant the variance would result in exceptional hardship to the applicant; C, a determination that the granting of a variance will not result in increased flood heights, additional threats to public safety, extraordinary public expense, create nuisances, cause fraud on or victimization of the public, or conflict with existing laws or ordinances. Five, variances may be issued by a community for new construction and substantial improvements and/or other development necessary for the conduct of a functionally dependent use provided that the criteria of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one forty, two, four, are met, and the structure or other development is protected by methods that minimize flood damages during the base flood and create no additional threats to public safety. B appeal board: One, the city council shall hear and decide appeals and requests for variances from the requirements of Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point one two. Two, the city council shall hear and decide appeals when it is alleged there is an error in any requirement, decision or determination made in the enforcement or administration of Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter fifteen point one two. Three, those aggrieved by the decision of the city council may appeal the decision as provided for by law. Four, in passing upon the applications, the city council shall consider technical evaluations, relevant factors and standards specified in other sections of this chapter, A, the danger that materials may be swept on to other lands to the injury of others; B, the danger to life and property due to flooding or erosion damage; C, the susceptibility of the proposed facility and its contents to flood damage and the effect of such damage on individual owners; D, the importance of the services provided by: A proposed facility to the community; E, the necessity to the facility of a waterfront location, where applicable; F, the availability of alternative locations for the proposed use which are not subject to flooding or erosion damage; G, the compatibility of the proposed use with existing and anticipated development; H, the relationship of the proposed use to the comprehensive plan; I, the safety of access to the property in times of flood or ordinary and emergency vehicles; J, the expected heights, velocity, duration, rate of rise and sediment transport of the floodwaters expected at the site; and K, the costs of providing government services during and after flood conditions, including maintenance and repair of public utilities and facilities such as sewer and water systems, streets and bridges. Five, upon consideration of the factors of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one forty, A, the city council may attach such conditions to the granting of a variance as it deems necessary to further the purposes of this chapter. Six, the city shall maintain the records of all appeal actions and report any variances to the federal insurance administration upon request. See variance notification. Any applicant to whom a variance is granted shall be given written notice that- Any applicant to whom a variance is granted shall be given written notice that the issuance of a variance to construct a structure below the base flood elevation will result in increased premium rates for flood insurance and that such construction below the base flood elevation increases risks to life and property. Such notification and a record of all variance actions, including justification for their issuance, shall be maintained in accordance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, B. Fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty provisions for flood hazard reduction general standards. In all special flood hazard areas, the following standards shall be adhered to. Alteration of water courses. Require that the flood carrying capacity within the altered or relocated portion of said water course is maintained. Require that maintenance is provided within the altered or relocated portion of said water course to ensure that the flood carrying capacity is not diminished. Require compliance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, D, and fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, E. Be anchoring. One, all new construction and substantial improvements shall be anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, or lateral movement of the structure resulting from hydrodynamic and hydrostatic loads, including the effects of buoyancy. Two, all manufactured dwellings shall be anchored per SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, C. Four. See construction materials and methods. One, all new construction and substantial improvements shall be constructed with materials and utility equipment resistant to flood damage. Two, all new construction and substantial improvements shall be constructed using methods and practices that minimize flood damage. D, utilities and equipment. One, water supply, sanitary sewer, and onsite waste disposal systems. A, all new and replacement water supply systems shall be designed to minimize or eliminate infiltration of floodwaters into the system. New and replacement sanitary sewage systems shall be designed to minimize or eliminate infiltration of floodwaters into the systems and discharge from the systems into floodwaters. See onsite waste disposal systems shall be located to avoid impairment to the whole contamination from them during flooding consistent with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. Two, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and other equipment. Electrical, heating, ventilating, air conditioning, plumbing, duct systems, and other equipment and service facilities shall be elevated at or above the base flood level or shall be designed and installed to prevent water from entering or accumulating within the components and to resist hydrostatic and hydrodynamic loads and stresses, including the effects of buoyancy, during conditions of flooding. In addition, electrical, heating, ventilating, air conditioning, plumbing, duct systems, and other equipment and service facilities shall meet all the requirements of this section if replaces as part of a substantial improvement. A, if replaced as part of substantial improvement, shall meet all the requirements of this section. E, tanks. One, underground tanks shall be anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, and lateral movement under conditions of the base flood. Two, above-ground tanks shall be installed at or above the base flood level or shall be anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, and lateral movement under conditions of the base flood. F, subdivision proposals and other proposed developments, one. All new subdivision proposals and other proposed new developments, including proposals for manufactured dwelling parks and subdivisions, greater than fifty lots or five acres, whichever is the lesser, shall include within such proposals, base flood elevation data. Two, all new subdivision proposals and other proposed new developments, including proposals for manufactured dwelling parks and subdivisions, shall, A, be consistent with the need to minimize flood damage. B, have public utilities and facilities such as sewer, gas, electrical, and water systems located and constructed to minimize or eliminate flood damage. C, have adequate drainage provided to reduce exposure to flood hazards. G, use of other base flood data. When base flood elevation data has not been provided in accordance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot zero five zero, the local floodplain administrator shall obtain, review, and reasonably utilize any base flood elevation data available from a federal, state, or other source, in order to administer SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty and fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy. All new subdivision proposals and other proposed new developments, including proposals for manufactured dwelling parks and subdivisions, must meet the requirements of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty, F. Base flood elevations shall be determined for development proposals that are five acres or more in size or are fifty lots or more, whichever is lesser in any zone that does not have an established base flood elevation. Development proposals located within a riverine unnumbered zone shall be reasonably safe from flooding. The test of reasonableness includes use of historical data, high water marks, FEMA provided base level engineering data, and photographs of past flooding, et cetera, where available. In unnumbered zones, when no base flood elevation data is available, the minimum elevation requirement is two. Feet above the highest adjacent grade to reasonably safe from flooding. Failure to elevate at least two feet above grade in these zones may result in higher insurance rates. Each structures located in multiple or partial flood zones. In coordination with the state of Oregon specialty codes, one, when a structure is located in multiple flood zones on the community's flood insurance rate maps, firm, the provisions for the more restrictive flood zone shall apply. Two, when a structure is partially located in a special flood hazard area, the entire structure shall meet the requirements for new construction and substantial improvements. Fifteen dot twelve dot one sixty critical facilities. Construction of new critical facilities shall be, to the extent possible, located outside the limits of the special flood hazard area. Construction of new critical facilities shall be permissible within the SFHA only if no feasible alternative site is available. Critical facilities constructed within the SFHA shall have the lowest floor elevated three, three, feet above the base flood elevation, BFE, or to the height of the five hundred year flood, whichever is higher. Access to and from the critical facility shall also be protected to the height utilized above. Floodproofing and sealing measures must be taken to ensure that toxic substances will not be displaced by or released into floodwaters. Fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy specific standards for riverine, including all noncoastal flood zones. These specific standards shall apply to all new construction and substantial improvements in addition to the general standards contained in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty. A flood openings. One, all new construction and substantial improvements within enclosed areas below the lowest floor, excluding basements, are subject to the following requirements. Two, enclosed areas below the base flood elevation, including crawl spaces, shall, A, be designed to automatically equalize hydrostatic flood forces on walls by allowing for the entry and exit of floodwaters. B, be used solely for parking, storage, or building access. C, be certified by registered professional engineer or architect or meet or exceed all of the following minimum criteria, I, a minimum of two openings. A, the area of nonengineered openings shall be not less than one, one, square inch for each square foot of enclosed area, where the enclosed area is measured on the exterior of the enclosure walls, three. The bottom of all openings shall be no higher than one foot above grade. Four, openings may be equipped with screens, rubers, fans, or other coverings or devices provided that they shall allow the automatic flow of floodwater into land. Out of the enclosed areas and shall be accounted for in the determination of the net open area. The all additional higher standards for flood openings in the state of Oregon residential specialty codes section R three two two dot two dot two shall be complied with when applicable. B, garages. Unattached garages may be constructed with the garage floors lap below the base flood elevation, BFE, in riverine flood zones, if the following requirements are met, A, if located within a floodway, the proposed garage must comply with the requirements of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty. Two, the floors are at or above grade on not less than one side, three. The garage is used solely for parking, building access, and forward slash or storage, four. The garage is constructed with flood openings in compliance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, to equalize hydrostatic flood forces on exterior walls by allowing for the automatic entry and exit of floodwaters. B, the portions of the garage constructed below the BFE are constructed with materials resistant to flood damage, six. The garage is constructed in compliance with the standards in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty, seven. The garage is constructed with electrical and other service facilities located and installed so as to prevent water from entering or accumulating within the components during conditions of the base flood. Two, detached garages must be constructed in compliance with the standards for apartment structures in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, C. Six, or nonresidential structures in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, C. Three, depending on the square footage of the garage. See for riverine, noncoastal, special flood hazard areas with base flood elevations in addition to the general standards listed in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty, the following specific standards shall apply in riverine, noncoastal, special flood hazard areas with base flood elevations, BFE zones of one of thirty, R, and A. One before regulatory floodway. In areas where a regulatory floodway has not been designated, no new construction, substantial improvement, or other development, including fill, shall be permitted within zones of one dash thirty and A on the community's flood insurance rate map, firm, unless it is demonstrated that the cumulative effect of the proposed development, when combined with all other existing and anticipated development, will not increase the water surface elevation of the base flood more than one foot at any point within the, community. Two, residential construction. A new construction and substantial improvement of any residential structure shall have the lowest floor, including basement, elevated one foot or more above the base flood elevation, BFE. The enclosed areas below the lowest floor shall comply with the flood opening requirements in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, F. Three, nonresidential construction. A new construction and substantial improvement of any commercial, industrial, or other nonresidential structure shall, I, have the lowest floor, including basement elevated at or above the base flood elevation, BFE, or, together with attendant utility and sanitary facilities. Two, be floodproofed so that below the base flood level the structure is watertight with walls substantially impermeable to the passage of water, three. Have structural components capable of resisting hydrostatic and hydrodynamic loads and effects of buoyancy. Four, be certified by registered professional engineer or architect that the design and methods of construction are in accordance with accepted standards of practice or meeting provisions of this section based on their development and forward slash or review of the structural design, specifications, and plans. Such certifications shall be provided to the floodplain administrator as set forth SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one twenty, B. A nonresidential structures that are elevated, not floodproofed, shall comply with the standards for enclosed areas below the lowest floor in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, F. See applicants floodproofing nonresidential buildings shall be notified that flood insurance premiums are based on rates that are one, one, foot below the floodproof level. For example, a building floodproofed to the base flood level will be rated as one, one, foot below. The applicants shall supply a maintenance plan for the entire structure to include but not limited to, exterior envelope of structure, all penetrations to the exterior of the structure, all shields, gates, barriers, or components. Designed to provide floodproofing protection to the structure, all seals or gaskets for shields, gates, barriers, or components, and, the location of all shields, gates, barriers, and components, as well as all associated hardware and any materials or specialized tools necessary to seal the structure. The applicants shall supply an emergency action plan, EAP, for the installation and sealing of the structure prior to a flooding event that clearly identifies what triggers the EAP and who is, responsible for enacting the EAP. Four, manufactured dwellings. A new or substantially improved manufactured dwellings supported on solid foundation walls shall be constructed with flood openings that comply with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, F, B. The bottom of the longitudinal chassis frame beam shall be at or above base flood elevation. See new or substantially improved manufactured dwellings shall be anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, and lateral movement during the base flood. Anchoring methods may include, but are not limited to, use of over-the-top or frame ties to ground anchors, refer to FEMA's Manufactured Home Installation in Flood Hazard Areas Guidebook for additional techniques, and, de-electrical crossover connections shall be a minimum of twelve, twelve, inches above base flood elevation, BFE. Five, recreational vehicles. Recreational vehicles placed on sites are required to, A, be on the site for fewer than one hundred and eighty consecutive days, and B, be fully licensed and ready for highway use. On its wheels or jacking system, is attached to the site only by quick disconnect type utilities and security devices, and has no permanently attached additions, or C, meet the requirements of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, C. Four, including the anchoring and elevation requirements for manufactured dwellings. Six, apartment, accessory structures. Relief from elevation or floodproofing requirements for residential and nonresidential structures in riverine, noncoastal flood zones may be granted for apartment structures that meet the following requirements. A, apartment structures located partially or entirely within the floodway must comply with requirements for development within a floodway found in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty. B, apartment structures must only be used for parking, access, and forward slash or storage and shall not be used for human habitation, C. In compliance with State of Oregon specialty codes, apartment structures on properties that are zoned residential are limited to one-story structures less than two hundred square feet, or four hundred square feet if the property is greater than two, two, acres in area and the proposed apartment structure will be located a minimum of twenty feet from all property lines. Apartment structures on properties that are zoned as nonresidential are limited in size to one hundred and twenty square feet. D, the portions of the apartment structure located below the base flood elevation must be built using flood resistant materials, E. The apartment structure must be adequately anchored to prevent flotation, collapse, and lateral movement of the structure resulting from hydrodynamic and hydrostatic loads, including the effects of buoyancy, during conditions of the base flood. F, the apartment structure must be designed and constructed to equalize hydrostatic flood forces on exterior walls and comply with the requirements for flood openings in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, F. G, apartment structures shall be located and constructed to have low damage potential. H, apartment structures shall not be used to store toxic material, oil, or gasoline, or any priority persistent pollutant identified by the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality unless confined in a tank. Installed in compliance with SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty, B. I, apartment structures shall be constructed with electrical, mechanical, and other service facilities located and installed so as to prevent water from entering or accumulating within the components during conditions of the base flood. Fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty floodways located within the special flood hazard areas established in SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot zero five zero are areas designated as floodways. Since the floodway is an extremely hazardous area due to the velocity of the floodwaters which carry debris, potential projectiles, and erosion potential, the following provisions apply. Prohibited encroachments, including fill, new construction, substantial improvements, and other development within the adopted regulatory floodway unless, one, certification by registered professional civil engineer is provided demonstrating through hydrologic and hydraulic analyses performed in accordance. With standard engineering practice that the proposed encroachment shall not result in any increase in flood levels within the community during the occurrence of the base flood discharge, or, two. A community may permit encroachments within the adopted regulatory floodway that would result in an increase in base flood elevations, provided that a conditional letter of map revision, clon, is applied for and approved by the federal insurance administrator, and the requirements for such revision as established under volume forty-four of the Code of Federal Regulations, section sixty-five point one two are fulfilled. A, if an encroachment proposal resulting in an increase in base flood elevation meets the following criteria, I, is for the purpose of fish enhancement, two. Does not involve the placement of any structures, as defined in section two point zero, within the floodway, three. Has a feasibility analysis completed documenting that fish enhancement will be achieved through the proposed project, four. Has a maintenance plan in place to ensure that the stream carrying capacity is not impacted by the fish enhancement project, V. Has approval by the National Marine Fisheries Service, the State of Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, or the equivalent federal or state agency, and six. Has evidence to support that no existing structures will be negatively impacted by the proposed activity, then an approved clon may be required prior to approval of a floodplain permit. B, new installation of manufactured dwellings are prohibited, three thousand and two Oregon Manufactured Dwelling and Park Specialty Code. Manufactured dwellings may only be located in floodways according to one of the following conditions. One, if the manufactured dwelling already exists in the floodway, the placement was permitted at the time of the original installation, and the continued use is not a threat to life, health, property, or the general welfare of the public, or two. A new manufactured dwelling is replacing an existing manufactured dwelling whose original placement was permitted at the time of installation and the replacement home will not be a threat to life, health, property, or general welfare of the public, and it meets the following criteria. A, as required by forty-four CFR Chapter one, subpart sixty dot three, D, three, and SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty, F, two. It must be demonstrated through hydrologic and hydraulic analyses performed in accordance with standard engineering practices that the, manufactured dwelling and any accessory buildings, accessory structures, or property improvements, encroachments, will not result in any increase in flood levels during the occurrence of the base flood discharge, B. The replacement manufactured dwelling shall have the bottom of the longitudinal chassis frame beam elevated to or above the base flood elevation and any accessory buildings or structures, encroachments, shall have the finished floor elevated a minimum of eighteen inches above the BFE as identified on the flood insurance rate map, C. The replacement manufactured dwelling is placed and secured to a foundation support system designed by an Oregon professional engineer or architect and approved by the city and anchored per SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy, C, four, D. The replacement manufactured dwelling, its foundation supports, and any accessory buildings, or property improvements, encroachments, do not displace water to the degree that it causes a rise in the water level or diverts water in a manner that causes erosion or damage to other properties, E. The location of the replacement manufactured dwelling is allowed by Sweet Home Municipal Code Title seventeen. F, electrical crossover connections shall be a minimum of twelve, twelve, inches above the base flood elevation, and G. Any other requirement deemed necessary by the city. Three, if the requirements of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one eighty, F, are satisfied, all new construction, substantial improvements, and other development shall comply with all other applicable flood hazard reduction provisions of SHMC fifteen dot twelve dot one fifty and fifteen dot twelve dot one seventy. Pass.
Passed by the council and approved by the mayor. Twenty twenty, blank mayor, attest, blank city manager, executive city recorder.
Wow. Mister Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we have a charter meeting immediately.
Second that one.
Holy moly.
We have development code coming up shortly, so we can get more of this in the very near future.
I think Mister Snyder is probably glad he didn't read that.
Okay, now any questions, I need a motion. And second, move us forward to second reading.
Um, I'll make a motion and move it to second and third meeting, make it an emergency.
Have a motion.
Second. I mean, now, that's what I'm saying.
I'll second it.
And a motion second.
I'd like, I'd like to have a map included next time into what areas this is affecting. It says we has a map, but didn't have a map.
Okay. Um, by roll call. Hopefully Council Goval and Nash are still with us.
I bet Nash is asleep.
He did lose Council Nash's computer guide.
Man, he's so.
Convenient.
That is sad.
Council Goval.
Yes.
Council Morley.
Yes.
Council Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Moller.
Yes.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Council Nash is absent. Council Trask.
Could, could I say no?
Yes.
I'll break a show of six. Z, yes, one absent, move forward for second reading on May twelfth, the title only.
Wow.
Um. Moving on now, there is no second reading, third reading. Uh, request for council action orders number five for twenty twenty, Sweet Home Orders obtained to special events by title only.
Sorry, sir. Can we go back for just a second? Um. Blair needs to make a clarification to Council Gerson's.
Oh, you want to do it now instead of the past torch, okay.
Best to do it now.
Okay.
Blair?
Yes, uh, so, my apologies, um, I was actually wrong, this does apply to unoccupied, uh, RVs. Now, it's only in the flood area. Now, it's only in the flood area, and there is an electronic map on FEMA's website showing where the flood areas are. They are mainly in the land immediately adjacent to the Saniam River, Ames Creek, and Wiley Creek. And so, when it comes to how this is enforced and how this is regulated, it only really applies to new construction and substantial improvements. And so, the way this is affected is if, you know, if somebody comes to us trying to build a place, and they're in this zone, then all of these rules are going to come into effect. If they're wanting to put in an RV pad, right in the floodway, they're probably not going to get permission for that. You'd have to make sure it's far enough away, and most of the properties that I'm seeing on the map, just looking through it, there's, they're either already existing and so this doesn't apply, or they are areas where there's, there's, there's definitely room for them to not be in the floodway, and in the flood hazard area. So, that's, that's really the, the way this would be enforced. Most of the area, besides Ames Creek, is completely undeveloped. There are areas along Ames Creek that this is impacted by, but again, it's going to be when they come to get their building permit.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, Blair. Moving now on to third and final reading, ordinance number five of twenty twenty, Sweet Home Ordinance pertaining to special events by title only.
Ordinance Bill number five for twenty twenty, ordinance number twelve eighty-five, Sweet Home Ordinance pertaining to special events.
Is there any questions? I need a motion of second.
So moved. I second.
Motion of second by roll call, please.
Council Morley.
Yes.
Council Coleman.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Council Gerson.
Yes.
Nash, Council Trask.
Yes, please.
And Council Goel.
Yes.
Let the record show we have six, six yeses, one absent, approval of ordinance number five for twenty twenty. Any councilors having anything for reports from committees?
I did an hour ago.
No, I do not.
Okay, moving on, nothing on the mayor's report, other than just a reminder tomorrow six o'clock here.
Do it all again.
Do it all again. For the budget message. City manager's report.
I just had a note to remind everyone, Budget Committee meeting tomorrow night six PM. Would like to have a definitive yes or no on who will be here in person and who will be attending via.
I'll be in person.
Me too.
Person.
Council Goel.
Uh, I like you better this way.
That's not fair.
Ditto, ditto.
All righty, thank you for that. The budget is not as bad as one might think, we're going into some more detail tomorrow. COVID nineteen update real quick, nothing's really changed as far as the city's concerned, we continue to monitor everything coming down from federal and state levels. You got an update from Commissioner Tucker earlier this evening. Greg, I'm going to give you like fifteen seconds to talk about that water leak, buddy.
Done.
He's gone.
Good. Good night.
All right, well, thanks, you guys. There it was, the big one, right there. Yeah, you know, we, just real brief, this was a big leak, it took a while, it was identified last year when American leak detection coming out and they found those sixty-eight leaks. We knew about it, we were at guesstimation, you know, through sounding and just normal leaks that we've heard, thirty.
Time's up.
Thirty to fifty gallons. Time's up, good. So that calculation that for fifty gallons a minute is about seventy-two thousand gallons, we were slightly off. So, here's what we did. If you can see the weir on the far right, we basically dammed that up, staff, it was Dean's and Dominic's idea to estimate and do some open channel flow measurement. We did that and we got an estimation which is plus or minus five, ten percent, but we feel that numbers, it's in the ballpark. So, we took measurements before, it was about four hundred and seventy thousand gallons per day going through that weir. After we made the isolation, which happened to be right on top of a high-pressure gas main, so, made the gas company, Northwest Gas, very uncomfortable, they were on site while we were doing it, but we killed that entire line, there was parallel lines on that street, we moved twelve services over to the newer line and abandoned the entire thing. After we, the next day, we took the reading out of the weir and it read, instead of four hundred and seventy thousand gallons, it read one hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred gallons a day going through that, to verify that, so that, that was a roughly an estimate of savings of three hundred and forty-three thousand gallons a day, which could be as much as thirty percent of our winter production. So, once we isolated that, now we did a seven-day average, that number for a seven-day average this, this morning, for our water production, is averaging right around a savings of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand gallons a day. So we're right in that same ballpark, we have two different meters and ways of calculating that, so. This, this should put us right around ten to twelve percent water loss, if, if, if we think what our calculations are right.
Wow. That's the silver bullet we've been looking for.
Yep.
And guys, this, this doesn't mean we're done, we've won the World Series. I did the quote, it's like we're winning the playoffs, we'll never get there, we'll always be chasing leaks. It's just the nature of the business, and we'll find bigger ones too, hopefully not this big. But this was a, a, a loss that was seen in two thousand and twelve. Staff diligently at that time, Mike Adams and staff before was out looking for this for weeks, spent many, many man-hours. Again, we didn't think it was that big, but it was, so, there we are.
Wow. Thanks, Greg.
Good work.
Okay, check him off.
Thanks, Greg.
Sorry, go ahead.
Finance directors.
One more thing. You look up on the screen, you'll see a, some banners. These banners will go up around town tomorrow to honor our graduating seniors, given the fact that their year has been cut short.
Oh, how great.
So these will be up until the holiday weekend, and then the veterans banners will go up immediately following. Yeah, this was a, a community-oriented project, all we're doing is hanging them. So, there's about a hundred and seventy of them, I believe, which is more than we have brackets for, so many of them will actually have two hanging, one on the top bracket, one on the bottom bracket at the same time, so, just wanted to make you aware of that.
Cool.
And the person who designed the banners happens to be, live at my house, so, she volunteered her time to do it.
It's a great idea.
One of your daughters?
So.
Don't you tell her I said that. Yeah, you were.
You want to watch it?
You said I wasn't on camera, right?
Well, you are.
You're up, Blair. You're up, Blair. Brandon, I'm tired.
I can let Blair do this, but he'd be good at it.
No, 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 no.
I will make this quick, because it's a lot of numbers and you're going to see a lot more numbers tomorrow, but what we wanted to do is give you kind of a snapshot on where we thought we were going to land out. This is through the end of the third quarter and includes our projections through the end of June. On the screen right now is the general fund, the adopted budget, kind of being in that third from the right column, showed an ending fund balance of eight hundred seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. We're anticipating that we will actually have three hundred thousand more by the time the fiscal year ends. A lot of that due to kind of an increased collection in franchise fees, and then some reduction in expenses as well. So, we also started the year with two hundred and thirty-three thousand more than we had anticipated starting the year with, so, that's a lot of where that fund balance is coming from. All of these fund balance numbers obviously help in mitigating, you know, potential cuts down the road, hoping that we can weather some of the, the more extreme cuts in the future. The police operating levy is this next one, again, a three hundred thousand dollar fund balance, we started the year with a hundred and eight more than we thought we would receive. Property taxes, we're anticipating an extra hundred and fifty thousand this year. The biggest reason for that increase is compression, we saw compression come down a percentage, we're now down to nineteen percent compression rate, which, now if you remember two or three years, three years ago when I started, you were up in the low to mid thirties, so that's, that's pretty significant. On the library side, we're anticipating two hundred thousand in available fund balance. Again, property taxes is the biggest driver for that, and just notice that on the total expenditures line, we're, we're estimating that we're going to save eighty-eight thousand dollars from what we have budgeted, a lot of that's due to the COVID closures, especially for the library since they have been closed, and then citywide, we've got a, kind of a non-essential spending freeze in order to, to build our fund balances and prepare. The gas tax and street fund, this is the one that we have the biggest concern about in, in the short and long term, given state guidance. We've talked, we've discussed the ODOT released their initial guidance and said that you can plan on, this one says thirty-two thousand dollars less this year than you had initially anticipated, which basically said you're going to stop collecting at this point, because we only have two months left in our fiscal year, and forty-five thousand for next year. That was just based on initial projections, they didn't have a lot to go off of, they didn't have a lot of data to, to model with, and so, they've got new updates coming out in June, it'll be too late for us at that point, but, as far as budgeting is concerned, but we're hoping for the best, but planning for kind of the worst-case scenario in that regard, and this fund is entirely driven, for the most part, for all of it, by that state gas tax, so, whatever we lose there results in, in cuts to that, to that program. The water fund, we're doing better than we anticipated on the, on the collections, on the user fees, which is a, a happy positive. For the last two years, we've seen declines as consumption decreased. This is not, I can't say this is yet due to any, any COVID, COVID impact, because this was in March, so before folks were really home, but we have seen consumptions increasing for folks that are at home because they've got more people at home longer, so, we anticipate an increase in, in consumption rates over the next couple of months, which then results in an increase in, in revenue generation for the water fund. The last one is the wastewater fund, this one we are actually seeing a potential decrease in what we anticipated collecting, so we're short fifty-five thousand dollars is the estimate for the year, but we are making that up in, in eighty-eight thousand dollars and save potential, or projected savings for the rest of the fiscal year, so, we plan on kind of washing out where we anticipated in that fund.
Thank you, Brandon. Police chief's not here, a city attorney, you have anything?
No, nothing.
I, nothing left, we will go ahead and adjourn the council at nine thirty-five.